...meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission Thursday, January 9, 2020, 7:00 PM. If we could, you guys can open a prayer. Prayer allegiance. Prayer allegiance, please.
My prayer allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just so folks aren't confused, I'm the Mayor Mike Ludwig. I'm residing over the first part of this meeting, and then, once they elect their officers, I'll be gone. So, welcome, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. Moving on to item two, fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, there are two ways out of the exit of the chamber. To my left, exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, walk down the flight of stairs and out into building in an orderly fashion. There also is two exit doors at the rear of the chambers. In case of a fire, again, you can either go left or right, out the door in an orderly meeting, in an orderly fashion, excuse me. Number three, roll call, please.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is absent. Vinny Grillo.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
What's that?
And Rich Suzak is here. Dane Thurgill.
Good.
Good.
Yeah, is absent.
Again, I am the Mayor Mike Ludwig. I'm residing over the meeting. We're moving on to item four, the election of officers. First up is the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a nomination, please?
I'd like to nominate.
Mr. Gray.
Ken Nelson for Chairman.
Nomination is made. Do I have a second? By Frank Alamo.
Second.
Second by Frank Alamo. Do I have any further nominations? Hearing on, do I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
By Ken Nelson.
Second.
By Mary Scott. All is in favor. By show of hands of closing nominations, please raise your hands. Opposed, abstentions, all in favor, unanimous? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing on, roll call, please.
Charles Lad.
Ken Nelson.
Mary Scott.
Ken Nelson.
Virginia Higley.
Ken Nelson.
Ken Nelson.
Ken Nelson.
Linda DeGray.
Ken Nelson.
Vinny Grillo.
Ken Nelson.
Francis Alamo.
Ken Nelson.
And Richard Suzak is Ken Nelson.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The chair is yours.
Bring your stuff.
What?
Thanks.
Oh, thank you.
Good luck, folks. My work is done here. I've seen your capable hand.
Okay, next, I would like to see if we have a nomination for Vice Chair.
Linda DeGray.
Second.
Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Vote on the motion to close nominations, right? Motion to close nominations? Okay. All in favor? I'm a little nervous here, so give me a break. Show of hands for Linda DeGray. Thank you. Congratulations, Linda.
Second, please.
Now, can I have a nomination for the Secretary?
Rich Suzak. Excuse me. Rich, I nominate Rich Suzak.
A second?
I second. I'm sorry.
Linda seconds. Any others? Motion to close nominations?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or concerns? Okay. All in favor?
Was there a second for closing? Yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, Rich. Thank you. And can I get a motion for the second Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Charlie Lad for second Vice Chair.
And I'd like to second that. Any others? Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in agree, to close nominations? Okay. The vote for second Vice Chair, Charles Lad. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. We have our board. Congratulations, guys. Thank you. Staff reports. Town Attorney report. Do we have anything tonight?
I believe you received in your packets the updates that Attorney Maria Elston sent over. There were three different cases on there. I think two of them having to do with planning and zoning. If you have any questions?
Anybody? Any questions?
Nope.
When we gonna meet him?
What?
When we meet the new town attorney.
Oh, I'm not sure.
Just appointed Monday night.
Excuses, excuses.
Put on the agenda.
Do we have a zoning enforcement officer's report tonight? I see he's not here.
No, he, there was nothing really to pass along. All the things that he's been working on really are in the town attorney report, so.
Okay. If we could schedule something next meeting for a zoning enforcement report to get the entire commission up to speed on what he's working on, what he's been working on, things that are pending.
Yep.
So everybody's on the same page. I'd appreciate that. And then, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of December 12, 2019?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or concerns?
I do have one on page two. Under public participation, second paragraph, there was an extra F on the second line, right after other commissioners' four, and then there's the letter F. That was it.
Jenny?
I had a few. On the first page, it says, under staff reports, town attorney's report, it said, second paragraph, Chairman Durin stated that there was a lawsuit, and I won't read the whole thing, but it says, Ms. Witten stated that it had been settled and the commission will discuss the issue in executive session at the next meeting. It's not on this agenda, but you might want to put it on the next one. And I have a couple others. At the last meeting, I suggested, and it was put in as a condition, on page four.
Excuse me, Jenny. Page four.
Mm-hmm. Page four, Commissioner Higley suggested that condition 25 should include that copies of any required certificates and/or approvals should be obtained by the applicant and submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission file. And the applicants did agree to do that. But when I went to page seven, 25 was 27, and it says, the second line, the applicant and a copy be placed/reported. The reported needs to come out. An actual one needs to be placed in the file. Okay? Just let me quick look and see if there's anything else. I don't think so. Nope, that's it for me.
You follow? What she, you good with it, Lori, or?
I don't know where she's at.
Okay, page seven.
Page seven. Because you haven't found it yet either, right?
No.
Sorry.
Hold on.
Page seven.
Yeah.
Number 27. Any required certificate and/or approvals? Okay? When I made the motion, I made the motion to have it actually placed in the file. The applicants agreed to it, but now it's saying placed/reported. We aren't reporting, we're placing.
So you just want reported to be removed?
Yes, please. Thank you.
What's that, Jenny?
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? By show of hands, all in favor of approving the minutes? Does it end it? Thanks, Rich. Okay. Next is public participation. At this point in the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided they may not discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Would anybody like to come up and speak? No one? For a second time? Nothing? Okay.
Three times.
One more time.
Third time? Well, okay. So I closed the public hearing. Are there any bond releases this evening? No.
There are none.
Okay. Old business. Public hearing, 2960. Mr. Secretary?
I'm going to start with Mr. Ken Nelson.
What's that?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
You're here?
Oh, yes.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Vinny Grillo.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay. And we want to read the notice, public notice?
This is the second time, so we don't listen.
You don't re-read.
No, no, we don't read it, so.
All right. Is anybody here for public hearing 2960? Please come forward. I thought he was throwing it back at me. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
This is a continuation of a meeting we started last month. And to introduce myself, Corey Garo with Close Chanson &amp; Miller, our engineering company. And we're the ones who developed the site resubdivision plans and also the plans for display. With me is Mr. Gavin, Mr. Mike Gavin, who will represent the owners. And also with me is Mr. Glenn Chandler, Chelder. He's from Planometrics, and he's a pretty, an expert on zoning requirements, so he will help out in the presentation as well. Last month, I believe, there was a little bit of confusion as to how many lots we're actually subdividing.
No beer.
Just to make sure that we're on the same page, there's currently eight existing lots that are owned by the mall currently. This display here shows you the eight lots. The, this application is proposing to create 13 lots out of the, out of the current eight. Three of the lots will stay the same. In the middle portion, the five existing lots in there will become five, from five to 10 lots. So that's where you got your 13 total lots. As I stated last week, this does not include anything to do with the Macy's part of the mall. That will not be part of this resubdivision. There's also, as I stated last week, there's no physical changes being contemplated for the mall at this time. This is just a resubdivision of the existing lots. Not all the lots meet your Section 510 lot and bulk requirements. However, there's a footnote in that section that allows this, this thing to go forward. And basically, that footnote reads that the requirements of this section with respect to the business our district shall apply only to the area of the entire site included in the approved special permit plan. And except for the maximum, I believe, building height, except for the maximum building height, shall not apply as a restriction to any subdivision of the original special permit plan area. And I believe, according to your regulations, this could have been done as an administrative approval. At this point, I'll turn it over to Glenn, and he'll go further into the proposal.
Is this, how close? No. There we go. I got my answer. Good evening. My name is Glenn Chelder with a firm called Planometrics. We've been asked to participate in this application to answer some of the questions the commission had at your meeting back in December. I noted for the agenda for the meeting in December that the application was identified as a special permit application for a resubdivision. I just want to re-clarify that, I guess, for the, for the commission. This is not a special permit application. It's a subdivision application, and particularly, it's a resubdivision application. So, the reason I think that that's relevant and important is that, under Connecticut state law, a special permit, as the commission is, certainly the newer members of the commission are aware, is more of a discretionary application, where you have special permit criteria in your regulations. But that's not what this is. This is a resubdivision application. The reason a public hearing is required under Connecticut law is for a resubdivision for other people that are in the subdivision to have the opportunity to appear before the commission if they have any concerns about the subdivision itself. So I want to clarify that tonight, we're here for administrative action in terms of compliance with the subdivision regulations. It's really not a discretionary situation like a special permit would be. So, I watched the video from the last meeting, and the meeting sort of started to go off in some other directions. I think it's really important to state that at the beginning. The application itself is configured, complies with the zoning regulations. I think it's section Corey mentioned at five, Table 510, footnote number nine. And it's really that regulation which set the stage for the preparation of this application. The property, as you know, as Corey's exhibits indicate, has been subdivided before under that regulation, and that's what we're looking to continue to do, is to evolve the mall with the lot configuration there to address the needs of the owners and the occupants of the property itself. Again, it's in compliance with the regulations, and particularly, this is what the regulations allow for, and that's why we're, we're here before the commission. I did prepare a report identifying ways that the proposal is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And particularly, I think, I'm not going to read the report, I think the commission has had a chance to look at this before the meeting here tonight. But this area is identified in the plan of conservation and development as the central business district. Particularly, the plan talks about trying to promote compatible development in this area, increasing the density of commercial and residential development over time. Talks about higher density development, new residential development, mixed-use redevelopment. I think the most important thing is the map, which is on page three of the report, but which is also on page 25 of the plan of conservation and development, that illustrates new buildings being placed at the mall and redevelopment of the existing buildings in, in new configurations. And that's why we're here. That's what we're applying to you for permission to do, is to configure the mall property to set the stage for future development and redevelopment at the mall property. And it's because of this graphic and the text that's in the plan of conservation and development that we believe that this activity is consistent with the plan. Page 33 of the plan of conservation and development states, "The plan's intention is to enable the town's mall area to transition from a single-use development to a mixed-use development. Financing and underwriting rules often separate commercial and residential property. So the subdivision of property to enable for that type of financing is part and parcel of this type of situation." The other thing I wanted to bring forward for the commission. Just hand these out. Just give me a moment here. Again, listening to the, watching the video from the meeting last month, there was an indication that, from some of the commission members, that perhaps this type of development or division of property was not a common occurrence and represented something out of the ordinary, if you will, in Enfield's situation. And upon hearing that, I went around to the major malls that I knew in Connecticut, looked at the town's GIS system, and found examples where essentially, all the other malls in Connecticut are subdivided in a very similar fashion. The parcels are divided for financing, leasing, and other purposes. And as proposed in this situation, there are common area restrictions that tie the maintenance and other issues together. Just walking through these pages one by one, Buckland Hills Mall, and some of the properties around them, not just the mall, but you'll notice that some of the other properties are also divided. Waterford Commons, I highlighted here in the GIS system, one of the large parcels, but even these other parcels which are down by the street are on their own lots. The Crystal Mall is a very similar situation, again, where this is subdivided. Brass Mill Center in Waterbury, and you can see that, kind of an interesting configuration on this one. Meriden Square, that's also been subdivided. Danbury Fair Mall, the same thing. West Farms Mall, multiple parcels, as you know, perhaps, or maybe you don't. West Farms Mall exists in two towns. So there's already sort of two lots, if you will, or two parcels, and then there's additional parcels within each town. And across the street from West Farms Mall, I'm looking at page nine right now, in my handout, the property across the street called Corbin's Corner, and you can see that that's also subdivided into multiple parcels. Finally, there was a communication, also a discussion about Blueback Square. And although it's hard to see on this map because of the, the density of buildings in this particular situation, within each of these blocks are subdivided parcels again. So this is a very common thing that happens, if you will, and is for financing and other purposes, to set the stage for development and redevelopment. And I wanted you to see these examples from elsewhere around the state. So I think it's our, yeah, I just had one, one final statement. Is that okay? So it's our belief that the application complies with the zoning regulations, the subdivision regulations. There's multiple examples, given the parcels that are out there, that this has been done in Enfield before. We'd like to continue that to put the mall in the best situation for future development and redevelopment, so.
I guess we're, we're not necessarily saying that we're, we're against the, the resubdivisions. I think that, you know, you, you mentioned a lot of these additional malls, but each of these malls had a plan as to where, what direction they were going. You know, when you look at Blueback Square, they had a plan. They had, you know, distinct areas where they had, okay, this is going to be retail. This is going to be office building. This is going to be medical building. This is going to be for entertainment. This is going to be, you know, a, a transition area that's going to have fountains and, and open space and whatnot. And, and, and with that, you know, they had a, a concept of where they were going with their development. And once they had that concept, then all of a sudden, it's, it's easy to sort of say, you know, this is, you know, this is the way we're going to subdivide it, because, you know, here we have, you know, a hotel. Here, we're going to have a store. Here, we're going to have some retail area. Here, we're going to have residential area. And all of a sudden, it starts making sense. But I guess what, what I see is I see an open slate. I see something that is not defined at all in terms of, you know, somebody could come in here and buy a parcel of land and, and recognize the fact that, you know, where we wanted to see a hotel is all of a sudden going to turn into a bowling alley. You know, and, and what's going to prevent us from, you know, we have this vision, and I totally agree with your assessment of our, you know, P O C D, in terms of, it says that this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do. But it also says that you have to have a plan. And I don't see the plan that, that we're aiming towards. Okay. And I think that's what disturbs me, and that's where.
Oh, I don't want you to be disturbed.
I, I, yeah, I find that, you know, I'm not comfortable with just doing anything randomly, and then all of a sudden say, you know, throw everything into the sky, and however it falls, it falls, but it's not going to, you know, fall into the preconceived idea that we have in our P O C D. And I think that's what.
Understood.
What I'm looking for, is I'm looking for somebody to tell me, how are we going to achieve our goal if we have this random subdivision of land that we don't even know what we're going to do with it, but it's going to be subdivided? I mean, and realistically, when, even when we do, you know, residential subdivisions, we know exactly where the houses are going, we know exactly what style the houses are going to be going in there, we know the color of the, you know, we don't necessarily, you might not know the color.
You don't, actually.
Yeah, but we might not know the color, but, but we know a lot of information. And right now, we, we have absolutely none, and, and we're just, somebody's saying, trust me, we're going to do a good job developing this. But I don't see it. You know, I don't see the, the, you know, the, the big picture. And I think that's what, what we're looking for, is what is the big picture? What is it going to look like when we're done?
So let me back up. I think it's important to state again that this is an administrative pool on the part of the commission. We're standing before you, or sitting before you, I should say, with an application that complies with your regulations, both the zoning and the subdivision regulations. This is not a discretionary matter that comes to the commission. Blueback Square, as you're perhaps aware, was a public-private partnership between the town of West Hartford and the developers. And the reason the development ended up the way that it did is the town agreed to build the parking structures and wanted public roads to access it. Otherwise, those would have been private roads. And that's the way that development worked out. The town invested significant dollars in that. They do get all the money from the parking structures to pay off the bonds for the work that they did. So if the town of Enfield is prepared to make a similar commitment, we would perhaps be here with a plan that would identify what your intentions are, et cetera. But instead, what we're here is reading the tea leaves in your zoning regulations and your P O C D. And we felt that the redevelopment of the mall property is established by those parameters in your regulations. We're here with a compliant application, and so we would like to continue to work with the town to promote the appropriate development and redevelopment of the mall, but you've already approved subdivisions out there of, how many lots today?
Eight.
Eight lots today, and we're looking to add five more.
Yeah, but there was a specific reason why there, there was eight lots, in terms of, you know, there, there was a specific Macy's lot. There was a specific Sears lot. And, and that's what I don't see. I don't see that specific, you know, hotel lot. I don't see that specific, you know, residential zone lot. And, and.
All the properties own CBD. And I think if you look at the lot line configurations, you'll see that they're all, or, I think, except for one, the existing tenants out there at the parcel. So they are the Wendy's lot, the Friendly's lot, the Sears Auto lot, the.
And the periphery I'm not worried about, you know, the, the Wendy's lot and, and, you know, the, the other lots. It's the internal, you know, configuration that, that you actually have there. In, in terms of, you know, how do we know that it, it's going to conform with, with the desirability of what somebody wants to do? If somebody wants to build a hotel, and all of a sudden, there's, there's, you know, he needs a lot and a half, how's he going to get that other half a lot? In, in terms of.
No, I understand.
You know, and, and that's, you know, you, you're dividing this thing up, but you don't have any concept of, of what vision you have. You know, we have a vision in our P O C D that says, have something that you're going to be going for, for, towards. And I don't see that vision. I, I just, again, you, you say, we're, we're, you know, and, and like you said, we will divide, we will allow you to subdivide it, but we wanted to see, what concept do you have? And, and how are you meeting our P O C D, you know, the desirability? And, and the thing is, you, you laid it all out as to what it should have and what it should be, so you know exactly what we're looking for. So why can't you show us something that conforms with, with our P O C D so that we can approve it?
I think that's what this graphic is intended to do. We tried to take your, the graphic on page 25 of your P O C D. We put together this material, which I believe was sent out to the commission as part of your package. It's entitled.
So, so are you going to say that it's, it's going to be something that we can look at and say, we specifically want to have a residential area here, and an office area here, and, you know, you know, possibly some retail here? You know, again, it's, it's very vague. It doesn't tell us anything. It says, this is possibly what you could do, but it's not really a representation of what's going to happen.
Your, your P O C D has been around for eight years. The P O C D recommended that the commission make zone changes relative to permitted uses and intensity of use, et cetera. We've been waiting for eight years for those reg changes to happen. They haven't. We're here before you now, interpreting and applying the regulations of the town as they presently exist, interpreting the P O C D, and suggesting, we're trying to move in this direction, and this is step one. And you might be on step three or four.
But, but, but that's, but I think that step one and step three or four go together, But that's, but I think that step one and step three or four go together, because once we see your vision, we will tailor our zoning regulations to achieve that. Right now, we could be putting in zoning regulations that aren't going to achieve what your visions are.
I think...
And basically, that's what we're looking for, in terms of, you can't, we can't put the cart before the horse and the horse before the cart. I think they have to go hand in hand. And I think that that's what we're looking for, is we're looking for some definitive reason why we should accept what you're doing because it makes sense. Right now, it's, there's nothing there, you know, I don't, it's all smoke and mirrors.
I don't think it is. I think actually, as a consultant who works with municipalities on writing zoning regulations for preparing P O CDs, I wish that the commission had modified your regulations sometime between 2011 and today to do just exactly what you have suggested, because that would now change the nature of this conversation. But you didn't. So we're here today, looking at your regulations and trying to comply with your regulations today, and that's why we're here and how we're here.
But you have to remember, we're planning and zoning, so it just doesn't get down to our regulations, it gets down to our planning...
I would urge you to read your subdivision regulations, which are administrative in nature. They are, it's a site plan approval, in a sense. Does our application comply with your regulations? I believe the answer is yes, and we're requesting your approval for that tonight.
Okay, Rich. Ginny, Ginny has some regulation stuff, so Commissioner DeGrae is next.
I do have, I have to agree with Commissioner SuZack, especially in light of the letter that we got a copy of today, where it says that your client may not desire to develop the mall. So now we've got this other layer of information that, it doesn't sound like there's a, maybe you don't have a copy of this, but it was sent to Nem, I may be saying the Neymar Realty Group, that, you know...
This is relevant to this application because?
And I'm just saying, is it, it makes us very leery that we have a vision, because it is right off of 91. It is sight, I mean, you drive by, you can see it. We want something that's viable, but we don't want to just, I mean, it's like a used car salesman saying, trust me, car's perfect, or lady owned it.
I think we're here tonight saying, trust us.
I'm just saying is, I understand what you're asking for, but you have to understand, we're kind of leery about understanding the need, the immediate need. You've had this property for a year, and this is, we came, you came before us in December for the first time saying, well, we want to do this, with nothing as a vision. We're not saying that it's a bad idea. Yes, I understand subdivision in these types of malls, but having a little understanding of where it's going makes a little bit easier for not only this commission to understand, but for the town people, because the town is the one who's got to live with this. And in 10 years, you may be gone, and we may be stuck with something that's atrocious. Do you understand what I'm saying? So I understand your idea of just, oh, well, it's okay just to rezone, but we need a little bit of insurance.
Understood.
That you're not going to walk away leaving this a mess.
I...
That's where I'm coming from.
For at least 20 years now, the mall has existed as multiple properties, which has been seamless to all of you and perhaps to every resident of town. They haven't recognized that there's different property lines out there, different parcels. They are governed by a set of easements and covenants and restrictions and agreements between all of the different tenants and property owners, et cetera, out there that make it operate as one facility, so that this ownership situation is transparent. For financing, development, and other reasons, there are, in the current retail environment that we find ourselves in in the world, there are opportunities that people would like to acquire property and make their investments in. We're trying to set the stage for this type of thing to happen at the property. Some letters of intent were on record, that were due to be completed by the end of the year. Once the application got continued, those letters of intent have expired. So we're now in a situation where it's much more difficult for the mall owners to actually operate and move in positive directions, because people are saying, that letter of intent's history now.
Your letter of intent is really no concern to us...
Right.
Because this wasn't presented to us until our second meeting in December. So that falls on you, not on this commission. And you're making it fall like it's us for tying you up?
No, no, no.
That's exactly how you just portrayed yourself.
I disagree, Mr. Chairman.
I want to be clear.
I understand.
We were presented this our last meeting.
If I may, this was presented to you erroneously in some way, shape, or form as a special permit for a re-subdivision, and the commission treated it that way. It is not. It is a subdivision and administrative approval, and normally, the commission, there are no public improvements, there's no drainage, there's no roads, there's no bonding required. The commission has done this, I don't know how many times before, to create the five lots that are out there. We're back before you. Did you ask for this at that time? This level of information? The commission did not, because there's no record on file. I asked to see the original special permit from when the mall was approved, and we couldn't find those plans on a timely basis. So we're here tonight because we have a compliance, an application that complies with the zoning and the subdivision regulations. That's what we're asking for, to move forward. You may not be as concerned about the timing as we are, but it's certainly an issue which is important to the viability of the property.
Well, the timing, the town has reached out to you over the last year to try to become a very valuable partner with you to move this project forward, because the mall has been struggling. And your company has not even reached out to us at all until this came up, which was just recently, and now you're making it like the town was not responding to your request or whatever, and that's not the case here. We have tried and reached out since the day you purchased this property with not a peep from your company. Now, this is the biggest parcel in Enfield that infects, it affects the entire town, and it could devastate the town. This commission, back in the 70s, made a decision to move everything to the center of the town, center. And what they did is they destroyed downtown. But we want to make sure we're not doing the same thing right now. And I'm sorry it didn't meet your deadline for the end of the year.
Commissioner Higley.
I have a couple things. First of all, I agree with our secretary. If you look at section 5.10.2 through 5.10.13, which is reserve, no, I'm sorry, 5.10.14, more than one principal building lot, and this is the B R section. It says under the footnotes, one, the overall site plan must be consistent with the standards of the district, and two, the commission, the commission shall determine the, that the building site and locations are consistent with the design standards of the district. And also in section 5.30 on page 64 of 123 of our zoning regulations, it gives you special requirements pertaining to the B R district, which is what the square is in, and it states that it's a special use permit. I understand what you're saying about subdivision, but it's saying in here in our zoning regulations that you have to do it as a special use permit when you're coming in about that square.
If we were before you for a building or development, I would agree with you. We're not. If I may point your attention to page 59 of 131, this is table 510.
Yep.
510.1 is the notes number nine. The requirements of this section, with respect to the business our district, shall apply only to the area of the entire site included in the approved special permit plan, and except for the maximum building height, shall not apply as a restriction to any subdivision in the original special permit area, special permit plan area. Section 530 deals with special requirements in the business...
Right.
B R district. This is for developments of a gas station, or development of a public garage, or requirements for a motor vehicle parking lot, or the section 530.4, which you quoted, is a requirement for a garden shop facility. Those are not applicable to what we're proposing here today.
Nope. Section 5.30 does have gas stations and does have flower shops, but 5.30 is special requirements pertaining to the B R district. And the B R district is what the mall sits in.
If we were developing a building, I would agree with you.
Okay.
We're not.
Well...
We're subdividing the parcel.
Are you going to keep all the parcels that you're creating?
I don't know that that's the case.
Last meeting, the gentleman said no, they were going to be sold for other things.
Just as Macy's was sold. Macy's is owned by a separate entity.
Right. And so is the Sears Auto Shop, and so are the movies, and probably Target. I'm just curious as to, never mind. I stand by what I said, and I don't want to appear argumentative, so I'll stop.
Understood. And I certainly don't want to appear argumentative either, but I think it's important legally to recognize that we're talking about an administrative approval.
I think we're well-versed on our legality. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want to have the town attorney come in, that's fine with us.
That will be Commissioner Alimo.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a question to the planner. So after this is subdivided, and anything is going to change, or something else is going to be built on these parcels, they have to come back in, correct? Nothing's going to change unless there's a full-blown application?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, thank you. So, and I was thinking about the town attorney opinion, based on this application being under our current regulations, and maybe we'll talk about that later, but can you go up there and just walk us through this thing? This is there now, this is what it's going to be, here's what sits on that piece of land, here's what's going to sit there later, because I have questions in some of the notes I took about the easements and conveyances, property lines, that's really what's getting me on this whole thing. And just so everybody even at home understands what these property lines are, and explain a little bit about that, if you don't mind. Would you mind just walking us, you know, and say, for example, X business is here, it'll remain here, or this line's going to be here? Because I got some further questions following that.
Just tell me a second. Which, should I give you one? Lori, when I'm an attorney, it's not...
Maybe a comparison.
To what's going to be there?
No.
Can I tell you what's there now?
No, what's there now, and point it out. But I think it was clear, the planner, Mr. Chair, I think it was clear that the planner indicated that anything changes, it's got to come before the commission, correct? So what you're saying about what's going to be there, it's got to come before us anyway.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So number 12 is empty?
Number 12 is behind Chipotle's? Where is number 12?
Right here.
Yeah, okay, so what's in front of it?
I don't know. We don't own that. It's not part of the subdivision.
But, okay. So currently, what's...
Number 12 is just, I think it says vacant land.
Vacant land behind Abdows.
It's at the 91 honor.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, Abdows is the parcel in front of it. Or the old Abdows, I should say.
Where Chipotle, currently Chipotle is there.
Okay. So see, what I'm saying is, I wish it said, that's Chipotle's, that's Red Roof Inn, you know, so it's a little more detailed, but go ahead.
Number 11, that's Subway and Starbucks.
Correct.
What's the Red Roof?
Red Roof.
Which is not part of this.
Okay, so Macy's is all of that. So does the line of Macy's go up to that blue line?
Yeah.
Inside the mall that follows that blue line?
Macy's owns all this.
So Macy's is to the west of that blue line, all of that?
Right.
Okay. Which is not owned by Macy's anymore, it's somebody else?
I'll give you a little more context.
Okay. So, all right, go ahead.
Okay. So that's Macy's. Number two is Figaro's? Okay.
So the line around Figaro's designates the parking for that particular property when this is approved?
It's from my...
The blue line or the purple?
Yes, but everybody within this site shares in the parking.
And that's where I get into some other questions I have relative to that. Thank you, go ahead.
This is also part of Macy's, this part, the Enfield Square. It used to be owned by Macy's, I'm not sure who owns that now.
What is that?
Is this where the...
Right, but what is it going to become?
I don't know what it's going to be.
No, I mean, right now, it's going to be an individual lot, correct? But it's connected to the current structure.
It is.
So that's another, some other things are going to be explained going forward. What are you going to do, chop that off, or, I mean, you know?
No, I think...
Let's let him finish the layout, and then we'll...
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just maybe before we go forward, there are existing lines today that go through the mall, through the buildings, today.
That go through the buildings.
So there's no, it's not like this is new.
So there's lot lines inside, within the structures?
Today.
Interesting. Go ahead. Thank you.
Sears, right there, number seven.
Okay.
Sears Automotive, number six. We got, let's see, the mobile station is number, well, it's not, it's not part of the mall.
If you will, let's go back to the Sears east of that Sears line, where the other line touches Freshwater Boulevard, right there. Are those going to become lots? No, no, go back down.
Number 10 is the common...
Okay, that's all of 10. Okay, that's all one lot.
It's all one lot.
That's going to go wrap around the facility.
Correct.
Okay.
Number 10 is part, that's all number 10, which is, you can see, it's pretty much, is all the entrances, is all the, the main...
Is number 10...
Where the main shops are in the mall.
And number 10 will be one of the lots that is going to be sold?
Correct.
Well, right, well, you're subdividing it, you're not selling.
It's being subdivided.
Okay, go ahead.
I think number one is also empty.
Yep. Whoop. That's it. It's over.
Empty, he said.
What else do we have? I'm not sure that I, did I hit them all?
I think you got, yeah, I think you got them all around there. So my questions are relative to that, where I am there with that, with the different property lines and easement and conveyances. We don't see that there. You don't, we don't see the conveyances. So like, on our notes from the administrative review meeting, it said water pollution control, no comment. Through the chair to the planner. Was the water pollution control at the meeting? There was a staff meeting?
It was sent out for comment electronically. He just said that he didn't have any comments regarding this application through email.
Okay, because, so that's one of the things I'm interested in too, with these easements and property lines, shut offs, curb boxes, the sewer accesses, how does all that happen if you start chopping all this up?
That's where, they can explain that.
Let's say grease traps. So the steakhouse has a grease trap, I would think. What if the grease trap is not on their, not on their property line because of the way things were built, it's just somewhere out there? How do they clean their grease trap? How does the water pollution control?
We need to get you another mix, huh?
I have all, my questions are around all that. I mean, I don't understand how all this is going to work.
You mind if I stand?
Absolutely.
Mike? Oh, you got a mic, there you go.
Good evening, my name is Mike Gavin, I'm the authorized representative of the owners. Is that better there? Okay.
So you're the guy we want to talk to.
I am the guy you want to talk to. I'm the one that came up and met with the staff to go over the property and what we could do with it within the context of the ordinance. I'm the one who's responsible for the preparation of the plans and the application, and what we, our goal was to do is to bring in a buy right application, which we believe that we've done. With the, in the retail industry today, based on my experience, it's just my experience, all of the agreements of sale have confidentiality provisions in them. So I know that you'd like to know exactly what our vision is. I tell you as a matter of fact, based on my experience, and it's just my experience, but I do it all over the country, they all have confidentiality requirements in them. So if someone's coming into you in the retail world and telling you, well, who the tenant is and what the tenant's going to do, that would be a first in my experience. I can, so I can't give you specifics of what we're doing here. I can tell you projects that we finished and exactly how we've done them, and you're all very smart, so you should be able to figure out exactly what we're doing here. So the first thing that we do when we arrive is we meet with the credit tenants that we would like to keep at the center, because we need to keep it up and going. Our goal, we own and operate the centers, that's our job description. Our first preference is to lease to you. However, in today's market, a credit tenant can go to the credit market themselves and take a loan to purchase from us the equivalent of a 10-year lease. So let's say Mike's Taco Shop, I'm the owner of Mike's Taco Shop, and you're the owner of the mall, and you say to me, I'm going to lease it to you for a dollar a year for 10 years. I go to my bank and say, look, this is the deal, can you give me better terms? I come back to you and say, I'm going to buy it from you for $8. I owe my bank a dollar over a same time period, so for $9, I've got 10 years, and now I own the building. That's what is happening. That's what is happening. So before, when the mall was originally built, the tenants that had that kind of horsepower, those are lot lines that you see then. Today, many of these tenants have that because they are national players, it goes, again, my experience, that doesn't make me the end all and be all, but in my experience, if you're a regional player, 200 stores nationally, you get to that level, like a Chick-fil-A could do that in a heartbeat, Chipotle's can do that in a heartbeat. That was unheard of when these malls were originally built. But in today's climate, competition is fierce, trying to keep brick and mortar going is a dollar and cents business. So in our preference, we would prefer to rent to them. That's not the economic reality for the credit tenants. Our business is twofold, so a retail owner has two sources of income. One is their rental income, and a second is the common area maintenance portion of it. We shared with the, with the village, the ECCR, which governs how the property is going to be maintained on a going forward basis. Because in approaching the tenants, we were unable to get them to sign to long-term deals, but they're able to move forward on a purchase basis. So there's two forms today.
Excuse me, you say tenants, you mean within the mall or these lots? The current tenants you're talking about?
Both.
Okay.
In a general, again, I can't comment on anything specific because I'm prohibited to under the terms of the agreement.
Just so I'm clear.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Okay, so tenants, when you, when you use the term tenants, you mean within and out on the, on the parcels?
Correct. It's a generic term for Mike's Taco Shop.
The whole property. Gotcha.
Theoretical property.
Just so everybody understands.
Yes.
Thank you.
So when we come to a theoretical property, such as this, where there's a property owned by a third party, the first thing we try and do is get it under control. So you see, you were asking about the parcel that we don't currently own, in a theoretical world, we would get that under agreement of sale and that would be pending, while we're trying to go through the subdivision process. And we're, at the same time, we're trying to solidify the existing credit tenants and bring in new credit tenants. Again, those new credit tenants would be the same as existing credit tenants, they're going to be able to go to market and leverage their brand to get better terms than they can lease from us. Because again, they're leasing from us from a 10-year term, it's just like mortgaging your home, are you going to rent or are you going to buy? From our perspective, we want them to rent, but them buying isn't the worst thing either, because if they're buying, it's the last store they're going to sell. Again, we're in the rental business, we prefer that they rent, but if they sell, if they buy, we know that they can be relied on as a long-term tenant. So it's not our preference, but we will agree. Again, in this scenario, there's two parts, one is the rental income that comes to us and the other is the common area maintenance. The malls as a whole, again, at Mike's Taco Shop, I'm, my job is to make you the best taco you've ever had, I'm not good at street sweeping, security, lighting, stormwater, all the things that go along with it. So I pay my landlord to do all of those things. In this new scenario in which I now own it, I still am the best taco maker, but I don't want to do all of those other things. In order to, he wants to be the best baker, he wants to be the best candlestick maker. If my taco thing stinks or looks poor, their tenants, their customers aren't going to want to come there. So the ECCR document says right in it that the center as a whole will be operated as a first-class center. And then there's a formula in there that says that each property owner is going to pay their pro-rata share of the common area maintenance. And there's a process that sets forth how it's going to be billed, what the management fee is, it's all black and white, it's lender-approved, it's tenant-approved, so that they know exactly what they're getting. So today, they're paying CAM as part of their lease, they pay rent of $10, CAM of $2, and that's how it goes. Tomorrow, if they were to purchase from us, they continue to pay their mortgage so we don't get that rental income, but in terms of operating the mall and making sure security's there, sweeping is there, stormwater's maintained, grease trap, all of those things, they continue to pay. Again, Mike's Taco Shop, I'm small potatoes, I don't even show up on your plan there. If they don't maintain my property, I can maintain it. For that matter, I could maintain the entirety of the mall. Then I present them with a bill. They have 30 days to pay. Again, I'm just Mike's Taco Shop, I give everybody a bill, 30 days to pay, 31st day, I can lean the entire center. This is to protect the tenants, but the community gets protected in the same way, because by contract, it has to be run as a first-class center. Secondly...
Can I stop you right there for a second?
Sure.
First class, is that the same thing as an A and a B?
Sure.
It is, so we're going to be an A-rated mall?
Required to be treated as a first-class center from a maintenance standpoint.
But for a long time, we haven't had any first-class stores, or A-rated stores.
Well, you can't get that if you're not going to be maintained at that level. Mike's Taco Shop isn't going to come in if I fall into a pothole on my way down the main drive.
So that's a new agreement, this A?
Can we, can we let him finish talking and then...
All right, well, okay, I'll write the questions down as you talk, sorry, go ahead.
Sure, but we provided a copy to the, to the town so it could be reviewed, and what we do is we record that document before we record the subdivision plans. So it's in order priority, it precedes the creation of the subdivision, so that it's in priority of title. If you were, if you want to belt and suspend the rate, we could add a note to the plans that says the property is governed by an ECCR, and you put in blanks for the date it's recorded and, and recording information, and that's just handwritten in when it's recorded. But that provides comfort to the tenants and to tenants, owners, and the balance of the mall, because we have to work as a collective. If the property isn't maintained, nobody's going to be able to move ahead, nobody's, customer wants to come next to a bad taco shop. In terms of access, same thing, so in, when these, in the early portions of the malls, easements were not built in. So you had to go, if I wanted to bring in, it was a burger shop and now it's a taco shop, so I need different electric service. I got to go back to you to get electric service, you got, great, I'd love to give you electric service, it's $100,000 for the easement. I can't afford $100,000 for my taco shop. They're all built in now, so everyone has the right to access, to utilities, to maintenance, to the grease trap, all of those are built into it. The common area remains with the mall owner as the declarant, and the ECCR, the declarant is the mall owner today. Each of the property owners as they purchase become a party to the ECCR by virtue of purchasing their lot. And they have rights and privileges under that, access, pedestrian access, vehicular access, delivery access, all of those things. So you're not creating a landlocked parcel, none of these are landlocked, they have an absolute right to it. However, you don't know what the mall is going to look like 25 years from now. So the mall proper, if you think of the interior space of the mall proper, they have the ability to change the access point. They have the ability to provide different but equivalent access, so Mike's Taco Shop can't be cut off, and I can't go from four lanes to two lanes, but you could move it if that's what was required to build the hotel or whatever it is that's going to go next. So the, the easement document is meant to give you flexibility for that redevelopment. It also provides, like you talk about, what are the uses going to be, become? Who knows 25 years from now what those uses are going to become? We're again protected, because it's the taco shop, I need my parking, but if you built your hotel next to my taco shop and you don't put parking in, they're going to park at my taco shop and now my customers can't get in. So it again protects you from that. So my use has whatever related parking is there today. If I want to turn around and build the hotel tomorrow, I can't do that because I can't park it unless I, I do parking in it. So again, each neighbor is protected against the other neighbor. So we have to have a certain level of fit and finish, we have eliminated nuisances that you can't do by law, but we can do by contract. So the purpose of this is to protect the mall as a whole, the mall for redevelopment, there's a section on redevelopment, tells you how it has to be done, in addition to your ordinances and regulations, there are contractual requirements, so it has to be same fit and finish. You can't put, I can't come in with rainbow colors for Mike's taco stand. I can't protect, I can't prevent Outback from building an Outback that meets its franchises across the country, but Outback can't come in and say, hey, my corporate design for Enfield is the colors of rainbow, you can't do that. But if I said, this is my Outback across the country and it matches, they can build that. So it doesn't have to match exactly it, but it has to be something that you would find in a first-class shopping center. So if you find Outback in other malls in your area, you're going to find an Outback here. If you don't find Mike's Taco Stand, you don't get to build Mike's Taco Stand the way I would want it to be, you would have to blend in with the rest of the buildings that are there.
Commissioner Ladd?
I have a question about the existing tenants now, if they want, choose not to buy, if they don't want to buy, do they have to buy?
No, they do not, they can continue to lease.
Okay.
He said they'd prefer to lease, they would prefer to lease.
We, we NAMDAR own and operate shopping centers throughout the country, we're the largest owner in this space. And our specialization is coming into the distress centers, stabilizing the core tenants and bringing in new tenants and redeveloping it. The economic reality of today is that we cannot do it without being able to give credit tenants the ability to own their property. So I've, again, I'm not the leasing person, there's a guy that does nothing but that. I have had conversations with different owners that are looking to come in and invest in the property. You know the community, you know the value that's here, you don't need me to tell you. We have demographic studies, because we're not from here, that tell us that this place can be done, that's why we're here. We cannot do it unless we're able to give them the property. They won't invest dime one in their own studies or their own designs unless they know they can own it, because they can't go to their bank and say, we're going to lease this one because we feel like it. That isn't how it works, that's how we would like it to work, but that's not how it works. And again, I can't tell you specifics about this center, but I can tell you the last three that I've done for December 31st. Okay, so I'm from outside of Philadelphia, spend more time in Jersey than I care to imagine. There is a mall in New Jersey called the Hamilton Mall, it had been owned by a local property owner last 15 years. We purchased it, within 30 days of purchasing it, JCPenney had gone dark. We went to the town, we told them that we had a replacement tenant, we didn't disclose who it was, and what we were required to do from our own lender's standpoint is, is solidify the out parcels, so restaurants. Then we had a vacant one that was just parking, and then a strip that has like a Bob's Furniture, I don't, do you have Bob's Furniture here? Okay, Bob's Furniture and two others. The bank wanted those solidified as long-term leases. We had good leases with them, so we were not quite as interested in, in offering them the option, but that's what we had to do. We worked with the town and the anchor was, has been filled, we recorded the subdivision plan at 2:30 on the 31st. I don't think I've gotten that close to the deadline before, but you know, there's always a next time that can be worse than that. So we were able to do that, and Pennies, they, they would have had no shot of getting the replacement for Pennies, because these people are the largest owners in this space, they have national relationships. Balloon, New York, when we acquired it, it had a Kmart that had been gone for almost three years. When I drove up, I put, I, I have a Yukon, I put the Yukon in the, in the pothole. There was still room for me to walk around inside of the pothole with a Yukon, it's not small. The town did three special meetings in a row, and one day I had zoning, planning, and board of commissioners, same day, I did shingles, not the favorite day of my life. The following day, they recorded the plans for me because I went back to bed. The day after that, we closed with a company called Runnings, and they're now open. The balance of the L was redone within six months thereafter. We can't do it without the anchors. That is the same way, that we, when we did that, there were two out parcels that were just created out of thin air, because we knew that the town had the ability to serve those. Those two came under agreement just at this last fourth quarter, and they'll be built in this first quarter of this year. In Florida, we own a mall that had two...
We got the examples, we got the examples.
Okay.
There's a lot of people that want to talk, and I understand where you're going.
As an example, my question was, Outback out here?
Yes.
If they're, if they're renting now and they want to stay renting, is their rent going to stay reasonably close to what they have?
We couldn't change their rent, the rent's a contract, so the, the way, again, I can't tell you what the specific Outback contract says.
I don't care what it is, but...
A typical commercial lease has a five-year term with four renewals, and in the contract it says, for period one, you're paying a dollar, and then second five-year period, it's $2. Third private, and they have escalators in it, same thing with the, I talked to you about the common area maintenance?
Yeah.
They would have in it a whole grid that says in year one, it's $2.50 a square foot, and it goes up 5.04% every year thereafter for the life of, of that. So we're not requiring anyone to purchase from us.
Right.
But a, a location like an Outback, if it weren't purchased by the Outback franchisee itself, it would be purchased by somebody like an affiliated investor. And if you look, you can Google that, you'll find affiliated investors, and if you look enough, you'll see a relationship where they own more than one, because again, Outback is looking for continuity and a, a brand recognition, just like their brand.
My, my reason is, I don't want to see existing businesses that have been around a long time going out of business just because they're forced to buy or they're forced to do this.
So the only narrative we cannot overcome is an existing tenant going elsewhere. So let's say, I say to you, you're Outback, I want you to stay, and you instead go across the street. I'm now going to tell you, dude, this Outback's killer, you got to take that slot, they, they killed it here. Oh yeah? Why are they over there now? Do you care what I say next? Whatever I say next is going to make you believe that he knows the whole story and you know half. And if you're smart, you're going to run. So if you tell me, I have to give you some other terms or whatever I have to do to keep you, you have value to me. I can't overcome that narrative.
Thank you.
So we're not looking to chase out any tenants.
Commissioner Scott?
Couple of questions. First off, I guess, and one of the things, I know you can't disclose certain, you know, obviously businesses you're looking at and stuff, but are you marketing this as retail, mixed use? I think that's a question that we have, is how is that being marketed? Is it, we are looking at retail and that's kind of the direction of going in? And can you answer that question, whether it is a mixed use that you will be kind of marketing for, which relates to maybe a hotel or residences or, you know, different things like that? I think that's probably one of the questions people seem to have about these different parcels. So I don't know if you can answer that for me?
All properties that we own are marketed as mixed use.
Okay.
So, so again, if we come back to the examples, there's retail, which is what you have today.
Yep.
Retail's difficult if you're just retail. So places that you see retail taking off, the killer of our industry is also the savior. So Amazon, you can buy all sorts of stuff, but are you going to buy a suit from Amazon?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to try it on first?
Yeah, no.
No, well...
I do. But hey, that's just...
Okay, well, if you don't want to send it back, you can go to, they now have experiential centers, that, that might not be the, sort of like that. So you cannot buy your suit that day, but you can go into the store and they'll have 10 suits, same color, so you don't see different colors, but you can try them on. Same thing with the high-end electronics, you can see high-end electronics. So they may have a fulfillment center there, they may not, but people are coming in to send, to look at these things that they don't want to purchase without having seen first. That drives all sorts of foot traffic. So you can bring retail back with that.
Okay.
There are others that are, are based on a user, so we're doing a, a school concept where a school has taken one anchor position, we're working with the local Y to try and take the other anchor position, so instead of the school having a gym, it has the Y, instead of it having a cafeteria, it has the food court. Then all of those uses are filled in after that. So you see like American Ninja Warrior?
Mm-hmm.
There's concepts where they take bottom stores on the first floor and the second floor, and they net the atrium. And you start on one side, you work your way over, across, and down the other side. That would be a complimentary use. They have bounce use, like my kid, I have a 16-year-old kid that's 295, big football player, and he says, I want you to take me to bounce you. I'm like, you haven't been to bounce you since you're six, what are you talking about? So I drive him down, they have leagues, so dodgeball, basketball, volleyball, thing cranks through people like it's going out of style. So again, that's a complimentary use to that. We find that the parents coming to pick up their kids are coming at the end of their workday, so if they have their own fitness interests, we end up with a gym that specializes in men, one that specializes in women, and then like a Y for the whole family. You then have different food uses that go along with that. So that's a retail, then there's a school, then there's a residential. So the residential version would depend on what your age demographic is that you're shooting for. The retirement communities, their number one thing is the bounce you, the Ninja Warriors, because what they want more than their own comfort is their grandchildren to visit. So that's the first tenants we, we put into space, because you only have so many square feet. Those are the square feet that you fill first, and then you infill from there. So we can do residential. We have done residential, school, retail. You name it, we've done it. Again, they're the largest player in this segment. We don't chase out any tenants because that's not our business. But the reality is, if we have to sell to you, we will do that. But at the end of the day, we and the community are closest aligned because we hold the core. Mike's Taco Shop is not going to maintain a basin or a driveway, nor would you guys agree, let's say we're all in it together, you going to agree that I'm going to run your basin and your driveway?
Yeah.
I sell tacos. Never are you going to agree to that. So we own that.
Well, related to that, can we, part of this is the common area that you're talking about. Can you tell us in relation to what the parcels are on there, what these common areas are? And are they going to be their own specific lots?
Common areas are not their own specific lots.
So-
So common, if you went to the mall just to shop, and you park wherever you park, that's common area.
Okay.
When you go into the interior of the mall, the walkway throughout the mall, that's common area. The green space, the stormwater, the driveways, they're all common area. So the only part that's excluded from common area is your building. You can't keep someone out of your building. Like if I came for Mike's Taco Shop, and then I go to the candlestick makers, candlestick maker can't say, "You came to the Taco Shop. You can't come in here." So within the building, I own my building, and it's mine, but I can't exclude people. But that's my building, the four walls is mine and mine alone. That's not common area. Common rights to it. So an invitee, whether it's a tenant or a landscaper, have access to everything. But in terms of common area, it's anything outside of my four walls. When you talk about the property lines going through the walls, they're same thing as a lease today. If I signed a lease for Mike's Taco Shop, I only get my building. I get the rights to come and go from my building. And my customers can come and go as they please, so there's nobody can restrict that. The only thing that's restricted is parking for employees. So we could say employees have to park in Timbuktu and hike from there so that the customers have better access, but that's the only restriction that can be applied.
Okay.
And the mall, the mall proper is responsible for the marketing, for doing things like a fair or things like that that bring people in general to the mall. Those all reside with the mall itself. Same thing, the common area money, part of that goes to advertising of the mall as opposed to Mike's Taco Shop. So things that you would see that advertise the mall, that's common. The signage, the main pylons, they're common areas. Directional, that's common areas.
Anybody else on the commission with questions? I just have a few things that I'm going to mention right now, and I'm going to open it to the public. There's a lot of people here, and I think they want to discuss this. So my questions can wait is, my number one concern is, everything you're describing is a condo. It's not a sale. And it's not a separate parcel. And I would want to know why you're not making condos out of it, and you're selling them out. My next concern would be is creating landlocked parcels. I've been a real estate broker for 30 years, and they taught us in every class I went through, you cannot create landlocked parcels. Next is, this town does want to work with you, very much so. That's the core of Enfield, and we want it as beautiful and profitable for you as you want it. Another thing is, I would hope at the next meeting that you could bring us some history. Something you bought 10 years ago, 20 years ago, that you did exactly this too. And show us the results that you did. Not something that happened last month and that got pushed through by the end of December. Because there's no long-lasting results there. Those are just some of my concerns right now that we will discuss down the road. But I do want to open it to the public and give them a chance to talk tonight. There's a lot of people here. We've discussed a ton of things. And let's start hearing what their concerns are, so you can address them when you come back up.
Okay. The, we have a buy right plan, and we have agreements of sale that expire at the end of the month. I don't have another month.
Mm-hmm.
Again, we were careful to make sure that we had a buy right plan, that we met all of the ordinance requirements. We met with staff in advance to make sure of that. So I'm not in a position to have another month. I don't have it. And with regard to landlocked parcels, they're not landlocked. They're easements that are legal rights.
But we don't see, we don't have any of that. We have nothing.
It's part of the application package.
I'm going to open it up to the, we could go on for hours more, so I want to open it to the public. So if you gentlemen could just have a seat back there, so the public can come up and speak, I would appreciate it. Anyone from the public wishing to speak for the first time? Ms. Turner?
Name an address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. Well, that was fun. Welcome. Congratulations. Nice to see you back, and welcome, welcome. I brought you handouts, but I'm going to wait to give them to you. One thing I've learned in my life of living in Enfield is that you can't have that line, "I don't want it in my backyard." Because if you live by a farm, and you bought your house there, and you want it to always be a farm, and then the farmer decides to make a subdivision out of it, and I show up here and complain, I got no leg to stand on. Which technically is the same thing with the mall. And if I had 11 million bucks when it went into their fire sale, I should have bought it. But tonight, I know that's so, and there's not much I can do about it, but I'm going to ask you to think a little. The subdivision application has one word in it that says "original." And I just kind of read it differently. I read it as "original" means "the first time." I know that they are legal beagles, and they probably have tons of lawyers, and I got the impression our town agrees to the same thing. But the word "original" means "original." And if you're going to come back and you want something new, it's new. I did a little research about the NAMDAR group, and it was funny because they talk a lot about why they buy them. They buy B and C-class malls. They buy them very low-priced. They usually are in some kind of bankruptcy mode, and they come flying in and buy them. And I didn't, you know, and the stuff I'm going to give you, there's a sheet in there that kind of describes a little. And one of the things I think commissioners is that you have not been given information about this company, who they are, what they are, where they've been, what they own, how long they've owned them, how long they've been in business, where do they get their funding? So I'm going to give you a bit of information. I strongly suggest that NAMDAR do the same. And I'm disappointed that they think that after a year of owning this property, and I for one have been asking repeatedly, "Who are they? Where are they? Why don't we hear from them? What are they doing?" And now we're 30 days away, and we're being blamed that we're not moving fast enough. I guess I appreciate the other state that brought their three major boards together in one day and made them work really hard and break a sweat, and in the end, they got what they needed. I think they'll learn that Enfield is the same. We will go out of our way to work with you if you bring us a project that's up and up, honest, and deliberate. So I take a little exception to tonight's dialogue. So in the packet I'm going to show you are some of the malls that they own, or did own. This is the Phillipsburg Mall in New Jersey. And when you see it, you'll notice there's this gigantic pothole. The structure on the outside parking lot is pretty much demolished. And really and truly, folks, if you don't mind, Commissioner, may I bring these to the table? Because I really do, or I can bring them over to Lori, and she could pass them out.
Get on mine, Lori. Mr. Chairman?
No. No. Sorry. I was reading-
No! There's one for you, Lori, for the record.
Give it to the applicant.
Anyway, you'll see in there, there's some photos that I just took. And these are not photos that I, they were just ones on their website when you do a Google search. The next one is the Imperial Mall in Nebraska. And there's actually some discussion about Nebraska in the packet about how they literally, I mean, this is grass. I guess they're going to mow their parking lot here. It really and truly, these are devastated properties. So when I listen to them talk about their reputation, they have a reputation. It's not necessarily the best neighbor. You know, when you think of Rich Doyle and Peerless Machine Tool or Shoprite, they're partners. They belong to Enfield. They worry about the people who live here. These folks live in New York. I take no quans. That's great. I know they sell rugs. I know they sell jewelry. I know that they get their funding from overseas. They were very specific. When you read the documents I gave you, these are articles that were written by newspaper columnists. They were not something I made up. That's why I brought you the actual article. And you'll notice that many of the articles are dated March and January of 2019. There are a couple that are a little older. So when Mr. Commissioner Nelson, you asked about their history, I'm giving you some The Enfield Square Mall has already been tagged in a way. They paid about $11 million for it. They got hit with their property tax bill. The very first thing they did is they walked into the assessor's office, and they asked for a rebate. And because the property was assessed, I believe, at 42.8 million, 43 million. So they had to pay taxes on that. They believed that that was inaccurate, that the property was, "I paid 11 million. It's overvalued. I want a rebate." That is a truism of this organization. You will find in the documents that I gave you that that is one of their standard operating procedures. They go in, and over the course of many years, they will continue to draw out those dollars out of the assessment. Now, I know that you can't really do much about it. It's the law. Just like they're telling you today that it's the law to let them have this special change. It doesn't mean it's right. It doesn't mean it's good for us. So I put the article of the JI in there. I gave you the article about the Philsberg Mall, and they talk in great, it's very long and detailed. But some of the things they talk about is that how it's, it was a high risk, high reward. They showed pictures of it. The owners of the Philsberg Mall have sold off bits and pieces of the shopping center that includes Panera Bread, Chick-fil-A, and Lehigh Valley Drone. Now, these are a little bit older, but they sold them for millions of dollars. 1.7 million, 1.6 million. So if you really think about it, they bought this property in, right? They didn't buy it at the highest value. And I don't, and let me tell you something. This is America. I believe that people have the right to make money. I believe that people have the right to have a profit. I believe they get to sell their property. But let me tell you, folks, this is like a parasite. This thing sucks on you. They buy them low, and they sell off the parts. And they have the right to do it. It just doesn't feel good. Okay? And the mall is, and what they call this, this is NAMDAR's exact words. They call this a value-add strategy. And you'll read about it when you're bored, because there's a lot of stuff to read. And they talk about it in different ways. And then one of the curious things that I thought, because you know that I have an ax to grind about the fact that our parking lot is becoming a depot for all the cars in the Northeast being parked, which is absolutely not what we should be. We are not a car-used dealer parking lot. Because I think that everyone who has a large parking lot should then be able to put those cars in their parking lot. But anyway, Nelson Tree Service Trucks made use of many of the vacant lots, which is what you're getting now. And I don't agree that it's something we should have done. NAMDAR is described as investors, a group that opts to hold assets rather than enhance them. Up to the point, they have been not redeveloping their malls. Most of the improvements revolve around opportunistic leasing and limited refresh to public areas, which is exactly what the gentleman was talking about. But they're not talking about A. They're talking about C. The lease they have to do. The, that one of the quotes, "But the group's reputation and high-risk, high-return strategy has upset communities where they operate, leading to lawsuits and cases." There's, you'll find an article about the Regency Square Mall in Jacksonville, Florida, where they signed leases and they had to go to court. You'll read about it. But they talk about things like, they didn't repair the air conditioning. They didn't repair the roof leaks. They did, they had buckets all over the place catching the water. They cut their security staff. They could, they changed the hours. They didn't take care of the lighting in the parking lot. We're talking about typical infrastructure things that we in Enfield know is a problem at the mall. 70 acres of our town. I want you to keep in mind how large this parcel is. So one of the comments that got written is, "The common areas are often filled with buckets and garbage cans to catch the water drippings from the ceiling." Absentee landlord with a reputation, and I'm not actually going to say what it is because you can read it. And one of the things that was interesting is, they actually spoke to Mario DiNatale. Just, I don't know, it's a, it basically, this person was the director of the Community and Economic Development for the Voorhees Township in New Jersey. You will find an article in here about them. And it has, "They watched the center deteriorate since NABDA Realty and Mason Assets," which are both companies connected to this project. "And they bought the property in 2015 for 13 for, they had, this gentleman had a front-row seat since the township moved its town hall to it several years ago. NAMDAR decided to hold on to the assets, do nothing," he said, noting how the center's escalators stopped working, and most of the facility's maintenance and security staff was let go. "They have a business model that's been fairly successful for them. It's unfortunate for the towns that deal with them because it typically leaves us with a black eye." The developer now has an agreement to sell and buy the center, so they're, the, some of the towns, and you'll read through these, truthfully, you're getting to drift. I could stand here and do the same thing that the last three gentlemen did to you and give you plenty of examples. But truthfully, they don't get better. They're really the same. They talk about how there's plenty of, like just here in Enfield, look around. Our other strip malls are very busy. We're Panera Bread's moving into a new one. I mean, really, look around. These same, these same towns are telling me in these articles the same thing. There's plenty of development going on nearby, but not here. Not at the malls that NAMDAR owns. It's kind of disappointing. And that's what happens after a period of time, unless you spend money, it just deteriorates. When you go in and you look at the rest of these, one of the things, it was the deputy mayor, Jason Ravens, this, he's talking about the Voorhees Mall. "We feel we've gotten a lot of lip service." Truthfully, folks, I believe, we, they bought the property, we never heard from them. We reached out to them numerous times, email, phone calls. They probably texted them. They never responded. And when you read through these documents, I understand, if you read through these documents, you're going to see that these other towns, these other states, these other places that had to do business with them, they repeatedly stayed. They reached out, they called, they begged to talk to them, and they ignored them until they decided to come talk to you. So when they showed up here to meet with our town, it was a little late to the game. One last thing, Mr. Commissioner. I do have a copy of the letter that was written to the gentleman who came in to see the town manager and the rest of the staff. I have to tell you, if I'm going to play cards with our town, I think they're going to show their cards. Because I was very disappointed. If I would think that you're going to negotiate with someone, that you wouldn't tell them straight out that we're going to launch a new plan of conservation, and we'll refurbish our zoning regulations, discuss future development, new zoning standards for the mall. In addition, NAMDAR is attempting to sell off the sites. We can be helpful in discussing our TIF and our tax abatement. Really and truly, could we not at least get kissed first? I'd like to just have some business where we do something together. So I'm a little disappointed that we, we seem to have turned over the keys to the castle so quickly. I hope that they'll be good tenant, they'll be good to Enfield and become partners. But if they're true to what they've been for the last 20 years or so, that they've been in this business, and they own over 200 properties that are very similar to Enfield, they don't necessarily seem to be going to be good partners for Enfield. Thank you.
Did you leave a copy for them of what you-
Lori gave them a copy.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to come up? Come on up, please.
Marie Pizner, 25 Roy Street. Mary Ann's always a hard act to follow, but she makes—she makes tremendous points, and she loves our town, and I commend her for that. We all remember when Enfield Square opened, and it brought new life to this town. It brought job opportunities. And we also know that the days of the brick-and-mortar stores are gone. E-commerce has taken over. So I agree with everyone tonight that says that this should be a mixed-use parcel. There should be residential, there should be medical, there should be dining, there should be entertainment, there should be something for everyone. I envision some of the hardtop, taken-up, green space, parks, outdoor dining. We are so visible off of 91, we could make this parcel into a destination that surrounding people would want to come and visit. I am disappointed tonight in what I'm seeing. I was not in attendance for last time's meeting. I did watch it on the YouTube, and this is what I saw. I mean, it—it looks like something I could draw, and I'm not an architect. I was hoping to see their vision of what they were actually going to bring to our town. I am looking for that new breath of air again, as so many of our residents are. I know there are legal ramifications that our zoning has to deal with. But I am just asking everyone here to dig deep into our toolbox and find a way so that we can work together, and I am encouraging the new owners to work with our town. We are not saying no to their ideas, we're just saying, "We need more clarity, we need more vision in what you're seeing." We do not want to end up with another—in 10 years, 12 different owners and an eyesore, a bigger eyesore than we already have. So I am really just encouraging the commissioners and the zoning enforcement to think long and hard, because your decision is going to affect the redevelopment of our entire town. With a platform so close and a train stop, I mean, we are heading in the right direction, and I just do not want this mall to set us back. So I thank you for listening to me tonight, and again, congratulations to Ken and the rest of you, and a very Happy New Year.
Thanks, Marie. Anybody else? Zach.
I've got you. Zach Risenoni, 1417 Enfield Street. One of the things my mother taught me when I was a kid is how you say something to somebody is just about as important as what you're asking for. And I think what we saw tonight are people that seem to imply that they're entitled to do this, because it's within the law. And as long as it's within the confines of the law, is that it seemingly doesn't matter what anyone in this town thinks. And they imply that they don't even believe that people really need to come up here to speak tonight about this. And—and I think it's implicit that they have no intention of being partners. They have no intention of a coalition with the town, the residents, and they have no attachment to this complex. They have interest in profit, there's no interest in a future and in a vision that's vibrant, it's an interest in how to maximize a profit. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my family, my friends, and all those who view this town as being a beacon of hope and being a beacon of prosperity. My grandfather came to this town in the—my great-grandfather came to the town in the 20s, and we own extensive amounts of property, Rafia Farms. And back in the 70s, when he was young, this was the all-American city. And what we see is not an extension of that. We don't see something that's going to be an all-American city. What we see is an attempt to subdivide parcels, first outdated version of regressive approach to urban planning that is standalone commercial property, which is not what we should be looking for. We need an assimilative, unified approach, a multi-use complex with green spaces. The mall was a 1960s design with the focus on the car. You go in, it's centered around. We need a place that is walking-friendly, that's imperative—that is extremely imperative to what this needs to be. And that's not what it's going to be. When you divide it into parcels, each individual owner is going to have their own opinion. And what needs to be is that it needs to be built together, and they don't have interest in doing that. What we need to be is, we need to be forward-thinking. What you see going on in the towns that are prosperous and growing, you take a look at what's going on at really the epitome of the economic power in the state, what's going on on our coastline, is multi-use. We're seeing commercial at the bottom, we're seeing at the top in the areas, they have residential. We're seeing small stores. We're not seeing a focus on these massive anchor stores. We need to be focused on and model what we see going on in West Hartford with Blue Black Square, what we see going on with Evergreen Walk, what we see going on with Manchester and Middletown's Main Streets. And this is an attempt to simply, you know, really push the can down the road, get a little profit, do a little renovations, but it seems by what Mary Ann said, that they have no interest in doing any renovations. And it's just not—it shouldn't be the future of suburban spaces. It shouldn't. We need something with an essence of urbanism, and that essence of urbanism isn't present. We're talking about green spaces, you know, you used to have the retention ponds. When I went down to Florida, one of the top things I saw in the South and what's going on in the West Coast is these lifestyle centers. These areas where people can go there, not just go out to shop for the day. People live there, people learn there, people have community events there. That is not what this is about, and it's clearly that they came today with a half-baked approach. They don't want to tell us what they're doing, and I heard they said that they somehow—that that wasn't—that they don't need to do that, or there's a multitude of people that haven't. I keep up to date with what's going on in the South, and one of the major things they asked in their town committee meetings was, they needed to know exactly what each parcel was zoned for and exactly where to be. They said, "Movie theater's going to be here, over here, we're going to have a health complex, over here, we're going to have residential area, this is going to be a condo." We don't see that. We should—I don't think we can take them for the word, and I encourage you to not do it either. It's just—it's unfortunate that someone could come up here and force upon us an idea that—that that isn't worth it, because it is. This town's worth a lot, and it's worth a lot to my family, it's worth a lot to the people I go to school with, and it's worth a lot to me. Not every second of the day, I say totally positive things about this town. But what I do know is that everybody that is in this town still has an attachment to this town, and the people that are up here tonight proposing this don't have that attachment. They don't have the vision for Enfield that we have, and we should vote against this, and I encourage you and implore you to do so. Thank you.
Excuse me? Sir, uh, could you just spell your last name, because we didn't get that.
Z.A.N.N.O.N.I.
Z.A.
N.N.
N.N.
O.N.I.
O.N.I. Thank you, especially for the recording secretary.
Anybody else wishing to come up?
Ray Peabody, 370 Washington Road, Arfair Town. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, and I wasn't going to come down, but I started thinking about it. And before I go any further, Ken, thank you for stating that we're willing to partner. We're with people that want to help our town grow, and that's important. We are open for business. However, it needs to be a partnership, and I think that's the theme you heard. I think Mary Ann said it very well, Marie said it well, and Zach said it well. There are things I think that if they came and they held a workshop-type thing and get our input, I think that'd be a very positive thing, and that shows partnership. We know that the mall is virtually dead. It's not dead for anything that the town did wrong, it's a market-driven event. And if they can turn this—this commercial entity around, all the more power to them, but they need to do it in partnership with the town, and I think that's what you all are striving to have these folks do. So I would not say vote it down, I would say get a continuation. Let them work with us, let them hear us, and let them become true partnerships. In the long run, they'll end up making more money, and that's what it's all about. You don't go in the business to be helpful, you go in the business to make money, and that's what we're—that's what they want to do. And I think we all should support that, because it's not a bad thing. They make money, we make money, everybody's—it's a win-win, and it's a win for the community. Like Marie pointed out, very highly—highly visible parcel off of 91. We have a development plan to bring—bring back what Tomseville used to be, make it a viable center. We're trying to do transit-oriented development. And there is a town in New York, a study that when I was working for Deloitte, we saw it, and it was quite impressive. They put a train station in a small community very much north of New York. Then, small manufacturing moved in. People could commute back and forth to—from New York City up to there, or from there to New York City to work. I would have loved to have had a train station in Hartford—in Enfield when I was commuting back and forth to New York, it would have been so much more convenient. That's one thing, you tie them all together, we've got a pretty winning formula, but we're still putting the pieces together, and I think this is a big piece. So thanks for your time, thanks for your good work, and again, congratulations to all of you, and welcome back.
John Ungeyer, 271 Abbey Road, Enfield, Connecticut. And I'm going to plead ignorance here. I came here tonight—I know very little about the whole mall situation. I knew that somebody bought the mall. So I come here tonight really with a sort of a clean slate with regard to all that's been going on here, or very little's been going on here, frankly, after hearing. So what I've heard here tonight, though, for the first time, I find to be very, very concerning as a citizen of Enfield. I agree with what Mary Ann was saying, and what Ms. Pizner was saying, and what Zach was saying, and I see these gentlemen come up here, and I sensed, you know, and just sitting back here, I sensed an edge, a bit of an attitude in their presentation, and I found that a bit offensive, frankly. And then to employ a technique of like, "Well, I can't wait," is trying to—to use that as leverage and put pressure on you. We shouldn't be in a position like that. And so it just—I find it—I find it distasteful. We—we have a vision for Enfield, we love this town, we'd like to see that mall and its properties be prosperous and be developed in a way that all of us as residents could be very proud of. What I've learned here tonight about the history of this company, I'm not confident that that's going to be the future of that property. So frankly, as a resident, and from what I've heard here, I—I don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wishing to come up? Okay, I see we bring the applicant back up. Gentlemen, you're welcome to come back up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'd like to clarify just a few things. I don't think it's our intention here tonight to browbeat the Commissioner or anything else like that. I think what we have here is in a very unfortunate situation. What you, apparently, and what the residents have expressed as their desires for this property is not what is reflected in your regulations. So the Commission sits in with a dilemma. Your application as submitted complies with the subdivision regulations, the application as submitted complies with the zoning regulations. It may not be what you want, and I'm sorry for you for that situation. You could have changed your regulations over the last eight years to have created a situation to implement the vision you say tonight that you want. But our—our client has invested thousands of dollars, tens of thousands, millions of dollars in the property based on the regulations and the other things that are in effect. So I'm not here to try to browbeat or anything else, I ask you to fully consider the implications of the fact that the regulation comply—uh, excuse me, the application complies with your regulations. It may not be what you want, but that's what your regulations ask for. So with that, I don't have anything else to add. Anything, Mike?
We have a compliant application, and we ask you to approve it.
I just want to say, you pointed directly at me, it may not be what I want. I don't have a want or against this property at all. What I have concerns is the landlocked. You say you have paperwork and stuff that it's not landlocked. What you're showing us right now is landlocked. And the original map that was subdivided, there are no landlocked structures on that property. Every one of them has access to a public road. Now, if your company defaults on all those properties, you cash out a $20 million, $30 million selling them off, and you walk away, who's left holding all those roads? That's my concern, is for the residents of Enfield. I don't care what you put in the mall, I hope it is something great for the town and for you. Everybody wins. My concern is, landlocking a parcel, it's not a way to go. And you can see the concerns that they have, and I asked before people even came up, I also—I have no idea who your company is. Show us. That's all I'm asking. Show us some history you have of what you want to do, because it sounds great. Show it to us. I mean, you've been in business 20 years or whatever, you've been buying malls, you've got to have background. That's all I want to see. That's fair.
Commissioner Suza.
Because I have one more question. I'm—I'm looking at the—our regularly—you keep saying that you conform with our regulations, and—and I keep reading Article Number Nine, and it says, "The requirements of this section"— and—and we're talking about lot and bulk requirements. And—and that's what Section, you know—you know, the 5.10 is, and—in—a table 5.10 is. It's bulk and lot, you know, requirements. And—and Note Number Nine says, "The requirements of this section with respect to business our region—district shall apply only to the area of the entire site included in the approved special permit plan, and except for the maximum building height, shall not apply as a restriction to any subdivision of the original special permit." So the thi—we're not—we're not saying that you're not meeting this bulk and lot requirement, we're saying, you—you know, you—you don't meet our plan of conservation and development. And—and the fact that, you know, we're not using this—this table to the—you know, as—as a—a reason to not accept your application. We're just saying, we don't see what you're really doing.
Understood.
And—and, you know, I—I don't—and again, I—I would have to ask staff to—you know, what does our—where do we actually talk about subdivisions? A subdivision of a special permit? In terms of—you know, I—I don't see that—you know, I haven't found it in our regulations, but I'm not that, you know, astute as to everything that's in—in our—our tables. So—so I'm not saying that I'm against, you know, the—the bulk and a lot situation. I'm saying that, you know, I don't know that we're really conforming with the entire, you know, planning and zoning of this location.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things, I think, is perhaps where, according to Connecticut General Statute 8-23, a POCD is an advisory document. It really guides the Commission when it's a zone change or a special permit, but when it comes to administrative matters like site plans and subdivisions, it is an advisory document. So it can be considered, but it's not applicable directly in the way that some of the testimony tonight has been. I think some of the testimony tonight, too, in terms of the landlocked parcels, the situation we have is that we also have landlocked situations in condominiums, where we have defined units which have access to common improvements. It's the same situation that's being proposed here. So the landlock—
But they also all own ownership, and that's why they're a condo.
And here we have the ECCR, which provides cross-access, utilities, everything to all of the properties—
We—we don't have any of that. We have nothing showing that.
As I understand it, it's part of the record.
What's that?
Understand it's—is it part of the record?
I was asked not to include that because it was proprietary. That's what we asked.
I think the redevelopment plan, which had been submitted for staff review, was not to be, but I think the ECCR was--
Well, we gave--
So let me ask you, if you were buying one of your parcels out of that mall, and you didn't have those documents, would you buy that parcel?
I think the issue is that--
Now you see our issue.
Yeah.
My issue anyways. That's my concern.
Mm-hmm. Mind you.
I have a copy. I'm going to submit it for the record.
So, so I think we've got a lot of questions on the table. I want a legal opinion from the town attorney. One, about their interpretation of the regulation, because it seems to be certain commissioners see it one way, they see it another. I'd like to see the town attorney's opinion. Two, the paperwork we don't have that we're supposed to have, or we're not supposed to have, which Laurie, I don't know if it's on you, it doesn't really matter. It just, that's a huge piece of this. Does that meet the requirement that they're no longer landlocked parcels? Because what we're being presented right now is landlocked parcels. And in the original subdivision, every one of those pieces go to a main artery. Buckland Hills Mall and all this paperwork that they provided us, they all go to main arteries. You look, there's little necks going from each property so they can get to a main road, so they're not landlocked parcels. That's not what this is. So they've submitted 10 different malls tonight. I want time to review this and do my homework on these, because the first one I opened up is one I happen to know. I'm looking at it. It's not landlocked. Another thing I had asked for is, at the next meeting, maybe they can bring in some history of the company and malls that they've done this with. And, you know, discuss it and let the public hear, you know, because you don't believe everything you read. I'm number one with that, you know? And I want to give these gentlemen the opportunity to present the positives of their company, because it could be a very positive company. So, I mean, if commissioners, no other commissioners have questions, I think staff has direction from us. And I'll--
There you go. Are you making the motion?
I am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I missed that. What was the motion?
To continue to next meeting.
Which would be January 22nd--
I mean, we all have a, you've got a grocery list of stuff that we--
I would advise you to consult with staff on that before you take a vote.
Sorry, couldn't hear that.
I would advise you to consult with staff before you do that.
Reason being?
Under Connecticut state law, the Commission has 65 days to schedule--
We have a motion on the table in a second.
All in favor?
He can give us an extension if he needs to. No?
No, we made a decision. We're going to move it to the next meeting. All in favor? Show of hands. All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
If I may, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, under Connecticut state law, that the Commission is not allowed to do that. You have to close the hearing within 30 days.
That's why I'm saying, he could give us--
It's open on December 12th.
He could give us an extension, should he wish to. But he's not willing. So if indeed he's correct, which I think he is--
30 days?
Thirty-five. Thirty-five. But that would be before we got the information. That would be like before the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if all the information attached to this application wasn't provided to the Commissioners, I think that's, your argument's null and void. And maybe you could agree. You know, a lot of the questions that I have here surround that document.
I understand.
I don't see it.
I apologize.
What's the address going to be of these buildings?
The town staff.
There's been a motion.
Go ahead, Laurie.
They have a right to ask for an extension of the mandatory action date or public hearing closing date. That should be, they should have that right, because the mandatory public hearing closure date is--
16.
16.
That's next Thursday.
So that doesn't give them time, or you time, to hear the next meeting.
Okay.
So they would like, if, should the applicant desire to seek the extension, they should be given that opportunity.
Because the other option is that we can vote on it, and because of the fact that we don't have all the information that we're looking for, we can deny it without prejudice?
I don't think that that is correct. You have every right to vote on it tonight.
We don't want to deny them.
You can close the information. If you don't want to vote on it tonight, that's--
But we can't vote on something that we don't have all the information for. So how could you make an educated decision if you don't have all the information that you need? So that, you know, if you don't have all the information that you need, the only other thing that you can do is you can say, you know, "I'm not for it because I don't have all the information I want to have." And, because you're not going to approve something that you're not even sure of what you're getting, you know, because that doesn't make any sense. So the other option is that you're either for it or you're against it, and if you don't have the information about what you're voting on, how could you be for it?
But you can, they can request that the Commission grant them the extension, so if there's additional information that they'd like to share. But you didn't give them up that opportunity.
Right. So do we withdraw the motion?
Yes.
I would say withdraw everything that you just did.
Withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the second. Withdraw the second.
Okay.
Now it's--
How would you wish to proceed?
I think there's a motion on the table, so I'm--
We withdrew the motion.
Oh, thank you.
They just withdrew everything, Glenn.
I apologize.
No, I apologize, too, because there's multiple conversations going on.
With the holidays, everything just, you've only been here one time. Normally, people are here three times and--
We understand. I think, Mr. Chairman, there was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought that the ECCR, we're calling the ECCR, is Easement, Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, which relates to all of the properties, was part of the application. I'm prepared tonight to authorize staff to incorporate it into the application. I'm not going to read it to you tonight, but I'm going to summarize it for you tonight, so that it is part of the record, so that there's any questions that you may have with regard to this document, because I think it answers all the questions that you may have in terms of the definition of the common area, the rights that each parcel has across the other parcel. And essentially, it is that the property lines only exist for ownership purposes, but in terms of operation and management, I think as Mr. Gavin indicated, every property owner has rights over the other properties and the rights to maintain those properties. So no parcel is truly landlocked. If you look at it on an aerial view as a map, yes, the parcel does not have frontage on a road. And I think Footnote Nine to Table 510 says that you don't have to have frontage. That's the very type of situation. It's not uncommon. I think if you look at the other malls for these types of situations where parcels are configured this way, and the key thing is, if a parcel has an access easement, it's not landlocked. There would be good public policy reasons where a landlocked parcel with no access to utilities or anything else could be an impediment or situation. The ECCR clearly provides for the common area, the restrictions, the limitations on what people can do. It identifies parameters related to the use of the property, use restrictions on the parcels, what people can do, the requirement for municipal approval, and the design guidelines of the town, should anything be proposed on these parcels. It identifies the requirements, should somebody propose to make improvements at the property, they have to get approval from the landlord in terms of landlord, I shouldn't call it the landlord, should I? Declarant here. The parking requirements, that if somebody's parking requirements are more or less than what they actually have within their property lines, they are free to use the parking areas around them. Limitations here in terms of signage, parking, lighting, design, painting of signs on the building, development about parcels, distances between paved areas and building walls, compliance in construction, obligations for maintenance, taxes, and insurance, default remedies, should anybody not fulfill their obligations, as Mr. Gavin indicated, rights to cure, and provisions related to common areas, and other conditions which are normal in these types of operations. And might I say, because there have been parcels out there, this ECCR is an evolution of the documents that have been in effect on this property for at least 25 years. I think you had a date going back to the 1990s, these types of limitations in effect. So in my earlier testimony, I believed that this information had been provided to the Commission. Is it in the record, Laurie, the ECCR?
The ECCR, so I'm looking at the email right now, and he did share the ECCR. He didn't want to share the redevelopment plan, so that is my error. It's a 45-page document, so if you'd like, we will give that all to you.
Well, it's the guts of the whole thing. I mean, you see our point, well, my point anyways.
I asked him to share both.
Even if you were to try to sell a parcel, if you didn't give them that document--
Understand.
Still need a continuation to read it.
But they have to.
That's technically not a requirement of your subdivision regulations for that to happen. So our testimony tonight, in the belief that you had it, was meant to be illustrative and descriptive of what the requirements are. I would have to say, my former life as a town planner and actually working for real estate development companies, I've never had a situation where this is a requirement for the subdivision approval.
Well, there's a lot more information that we're requesting also. So at this point, would you wish to request an extension, or do you want the vote tonight?
We do not want to request an extension.
You do not?
We do not.
Okay.
The review of the application states that the proposed re-subdivision meets the minimum requirements of zoning and subdivision regulations. We filed a fully compliant application, and we have our own contractual deadlines which we otherwise default under.
So you don't want to extend this to the 23rd? You don't wish to have a continuance? Just want to clarify.
What's the date that it runs out on? I don't have the authorization to do that. We have contractual obligations that we're going to default under.
Okay. Do you need some time? I mean, we could take a five-minute recess if you've got to call somebody. We're trying to work with you, not against you. And with the information that we're missing right now, I don't see too positive of the turnout.
Again, the application's been reviewed and been found to be compliant.
I understand. You've said that 10 times, but we're missing half of the application.
It's not required, actually, on your application checklist.
Before I approve a piece of landlocked land, because that's what that is, without your documentation to back it up, that's what we're looking at. And without a town attorney opinion telling me that that's not landlocked, I'm not ready to vote on this.
Understood, Mr. Chairman.
If you're going to force a vote, you're going to force a vote.
I don't think we're looking to force a vote. I think that what Mr. Gavin is saying is that he doesn't have the ability, given his other contractual obligations, to allow for the continuation of the hearing, and then you still understand you get 65 days to act. So I think that the issue is, is that the application, we believe, complies with your regulations. Footnote Nine, the Table 510, says that there is no frontage or other requirement, and that concern that you may have, I'm testifying before you this evening, is addressed in the ECCR. So every property has access across every other property. So there is no parcel that is landlocked in the traditional sense of being denied access to utilities, or roadways, or parking, or anything else like that. That issue has been addressed and will be addressed, as the ECCR gets filed before the lots get filed, as Mr. Gavin had testified this evening. So I'm not sure that it's integral to the Commission's decision from that perspective.
Chairman.
If you're saying that it's administrative approval, why are you here tonight for a public hearing?
Because a public hearing is required by Connecticut state law. We--
But that's not administrative approval.
I understand. Most subdivisions in Connecticut are not required to have a public hearing. The Commission can simply approve them administratively. On the other hand, the legislature did carve out a re-subdivision, because under the definition of a re-subdivision, it's generally because, for example, we had talked earlier about a residential subdivision, that there might have been a 20-lot subdivision, and 15 of the lots were sold, and on one of the remaining parcels, somebody comes along and proposes to cut that lot into two. And the property owners who bought the other lots said, "Well, whoa, I thought I was buying into a 20-lot subdivision, not a 21." So the re-subdivision is a public notification requirement to give everybody an opportunity to provide testimony, should they be affected by that configuration. So that's why a re-subdivision is required to have a public hearing. So it's sunshine law, freedom of, it's notification, et cetera, but it's not because of any specific or technical standard. It's just good practice, good public policy.
How do you guys want to proceed? Well, we've got to close the public hearing first.
Chairman, I just had one suggestion, if you were open to it. The close, the date to close the public hearing is next Thursday. So if you wanted to, we could, if you would be open to it, you could hold a special meeting too, to go over this, and we can send you guys the ECCR to go over.
Are they going to have all the information that we need? Because Ken had a few items. That's not going to give them enough time. Or the town attorney, the town attorney's brand new.
I want to give them an opportunity to provide success stories--
That's what I'm saying.
--to counter--
And if we, we could have a special meeting, but, you know, I don't think all this stuff's going to be ready.
How about our next regular meeting?
No, it's too late.
We could have the ECCR prepared for you. And I started preparing for them, and I got sidetracked. I fully admit that that was my bad, but I thought I was asking for the other ones.
Are you going to have--
Proposals.
Are you going to have time to get Ken's answers?
From the town attorney?
That is a question I don't have an answer to.
They could give us an extension, and--
Are you willing to give us some, you know, success stories to counter these not-so-successful-- I mean, you're 20 years in business. Show us some all you've got that's, you know, successful and worked under this plan and--
The application is what it is. The fact that--
You made your point.
The--
Laurie, how do you want to proceed?
It's really not my decision, so, I mean--
So our option is to close the public hearing and vote tonight--
Right.
--because they don't want to extend. Or we do a special meeting--
And they still want it.
--for a partner that doesn't want to be a partner with us. How do you guys want to proceed? Okay, I'm going to call the public up again one more time for final comments, right? Okay, we're going to call the public up one more time, please. Anyone wishing to come up and speak for the second time? Anyone coming, wishing to come up and speak? Going for the third time, anyone? Okay, I make a motion, we close the public hearing. Sorry. I closed the public hearing.
No.
Nope. What?
He has to make a motion for you to close.
I make a motion, we close public hearing, 2962.
All in favor?
Any discussion on a motion?
Discussion.
I--
Paul.
No, no, first you have to have a discussion. You know, if we have any concerns or comments, they have to be gotten into the record. I have a couple things. I don't believe it's in keeping with our POCD. And we, the town spent a lot of money and a lot of time and interviewed a lot of citizens to get what's there. The only other thing is, I'm not comfortable with voting, because I feel I don't have enough detail and information to make an informed decision. So that's how I feel about it.
Kind of the same with Jenny's saying. To the applicants, I just, you know, find it a little troubling that you don't want to continue or ask us for a continuation. You know, the document missing from the file or missing from the application, I know I think you're saying it doesn't, it's not required, but I can tell you, a lot of the questions I had, that document would have answered. And if you, you know, if you don't just ask us for another meeting or continuance, all this just is going to blow away. And I don't think that's good for either side. I don't think it's good for you, and it's not good for us. It's not fair. You know, we didn't see what you, the other document, so I think you should reconsider public hearing closing tonight. I think we should give them another chance to ask for an extension. We didn't close it yet, though. I don't feel comfortable voting without the information.
Okay.
Commissioner Susa.
You know, I, again, reiterate my initial concerns in terms of, you know, we have a vision for this space to develop into something positive. I think it could develop into something positive. I'm not against the subdivision, and, you know, I've, and we keep making reference-- And, you know, I've, and we keep making reference to the bulk and lot, you know, regulations. And again, we're not, you know, using that as an excuse to not, you know, approve this subdivision. You know, I see that the fact that, you know, I want to be more informed, you know, being part of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, we're not only a zoning commission, but also a planning commission, where we want to see the big picture and we want to see how the town is going to develop or how this particular area is going to develop. Not that the fact that we're going to just leave it to haphazardly develop in any form or fashion that it might utilize when we already have a plan of conservation and development that says what our vision for that area is.
Commissioner DeGrae.
I too feel really uncomfortable about this. I mean, recently, we had a developer come in, didn't disclose any information about their potential tenant, but did have a plan, presented it to us. It was clear, it was cut, that they really wanted to move forward and work with us. We've only gotten part of the information. Granted, it, there was a little mix-up, we had a holiday. But it's such a big piece of Enfield to have this beautiful lot right in the middle of town and have no idea. And we have, we have to live here, we have to face the residents every day. And they're going to look at us and say, well, you just let them cut it up and look at what they did. I feel really uncomfortable. I really wish we had the information. And I'm just torn about it because I don't think we have enough input from this company. And yes, it is their land. Yes, they have a, they want to keep everything close to the vest, but we're trying to work with you. And we ask for just a week and we're to get the information, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the staff. Could you look back on that motion? Because I believe we removed the motion off the table. Didn't you ask Charles?
At this point, you're discussing closing the hearing.
That was a continuation motion.
Was there actual motion and vote on to close the public hearing?
The motion was to close the public hearing.
Linda made it, Jenny seconded, you're having discussions. You have not voted to close the public hearing at this time.
We haven't voted yet. That's what I thought. Okay.
Commissioner Scott.
At this point, I feel like I don't have enough information, just as much as everybody else has said up here. I really would like to see the ECCR when it comes to re-subdividing land. That is an essential piece. And I don't think, not having that in front of me to be able to look at, I can't make a good decision with regards to that. Other than that, you know, that's pretty much my only issue with regards to everything, so.
Yes?
Take a recess?
Yep.
Would you be willing to do that?
Yes. Yeah, we are in a kind of a middle of a motion here.
Yeah.
Do you want us to continue or take a recess? Because my question to you, one of the questions to you was, what if we deny without prejudice? Again, I don't know why, but I'm trying to be a willing partner with these people and make something happen here. Because we all know this isn't going down a good road. And I feel I'm sitting here right now trying to be strong-armed. I don't have information and I don't like it. So we can vote without prejudice, so they can come back, or we can deny them. Well, at least that's my vote, okay? Because I don't have the information, Lori, whether it's on you or on them. But I'm willing to give them the opportunity to try to sell themselves because the public did a very good job of not selling them. I'm willing to give any to make this work. I want to work with them. Because this affects generations to come for our town. And I'm very concerned. And without legal opinions from our town attorney, not from this gentleman who says, our code says this, I want to hear from our town attorney. So that would be my question to you. Can we vote and reject without prejudice? Deny without prejudice?
You certainly can do that. Then they'd have to make reapplication if they wanted to come back.
Okay.
But.
Do you still want to take a recess? Oh, all right, so.
If she wants to take it, we'll take it off the table if she wants to take a recess.
Is there any, I guess, since the public hearing is not closed, you can still ask the applicant if they want?
The public hearing's closed.
You didn't vote on it?
The public hearing is closed.
But there's no vote? Right, so you haven't voted to close the public hearing.
Can we take the motion off the table?
You can do that as well.
Yes, we voted.
We voted to close the public hearing. Now, this is the vote on the motion? On the application.
This is the discussion on the motion.
Right.
So we haven't made the motion. We haven't. We've made the motion to close a public hearing. We're now having discussion. That's as far as we've got on the vote, before voting, so.
So like I said, the motion, I think, could still be taken off the table. We haven't voted. We're in a discussion phase of the motion.
So then make a motion to take it off the table.
I make a motion to take that off the table.
Is there a second?
Oh, my gosh.
There's no second. So it's up to you. Either second his motion. Come on, Linda, what are we doing?
This goes.
Lori's the one who asked for the recess.
I withdraw my motion so that we can have a five-minute recess.
And I'll second, I withdraw my second.
Okay, I call a five-minute recess? Thank you. Sorry.
Meeting back to order. Do they need a few more minutes, Lori?
He's calling his boss or owners or whoever.
I'm going to work with him.
Yeah. I'm trying to get them to agree to at least a week extension. You guys could have, I could email you the E C E Rs, ECCRs tonight. I can email them to you right now.
So you're saying for a special meeting next week?
If you're all, if you're all inclined.
For one week?
They won't need the extension for a week.
But what about the legal opinion?
So.
If there's a special meeting.
The attorney Gavin will not, is unavailable for next week or the following week. So that's one of his issues, but, so.
Well, one of my concerns is last meeting, nobody was here.
I understand that.
Delayed.
And that was.
Because we got zero answers.
I understand that. The applicant has returned.
No, the public hearing is not closed.
So another concern is since the public hearing is closed.
It's not closed.
It's not closed. You took the motion off the table. You took the motion off the table.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did. Yes, we took the motion off the table.
So what, so perhaps with.
I know, I thought it did.
It's in the past.
All right. Mr. Chairman, perhaps the applicant would be willing to, perhaps the applicant would be willing to come up and say whether they'd like to extend or not, or come back in a week?
We're able to extend until next Thursday. I will not be able to come back. We have another hearing in Chicago, so, but you'll have a week. I can provide any feedback to your lawyer on the ECCR. I think prior counsel went through it. It is a contract. So the, these issues that you're concerned about, the maintenance and everything else, it is a contract. It goes in the record. We, in other communities, we have, we have listed it on the subdivision plans that are recorded. If that is the preference of the board, I am authorized to do that as a condition. The lenders will approve that. It is not that this community is not important. It's not that I don't want to be back here in a week. I already have that other hearing scheduled.
We understand.
I cannot do that. Again, our intention all along was to provide a compliant application because we're going to tenants and we've signed contracts on the basis that we met the ordinance requirements. I appreciate that there's concerns, on whatever basis that there are. There's stories to all of those. We're not going to put on a, on our business on trial. It's not an ordinance requirement. Each of these is specific and they are infuriating because accurate isn't even a word. It could be used generally with regard to them. But nevertheless, people are going to have whatever opinion they have. A contract is black and white. You'll see in there exactly what I told you is in there. The CAM is a specific section. It has a specific formula. It has lien rights. So your, your prior counsel had the ability to review it and confirm that it was what we represented it to be. Your new counsel can do the same thing. It is a, an industry document. The banks require it because again, if it's Mike's Taco Shop, I need to know that it's going to be maintained because if somebody closes my entrance, I cannot run my business. So it is all there in black and white. It is recorded. You can make it a condition of approval if that's what you prefer. But we were upfront with it. We provided it to the town for review and comment, and we incorporated the changes that were discussed. I'm sorry that it feels like you're being pressed. We did not intend any of that. Again, we were purposeful and deliberate in coming up with an application that meant, that met the ordinance requirements.
I understand. And if, all I'm going to say is now that you have some of the concerns from the audience, if you want to send any information with the people coming next week, feel free to. If you don't, I'm going to assume you're not going to acknowledge them. Okay.
It isn't worth the papers written on. I'll give you a, one single example. Voorhees was condemned by the town after the town refused to make any approvals. So if you review the record in Voorhees, you'll find that they condemned us. As the town manager discussed what was going on while they were denying our applications to re-attend it, look, I mean.
I understand. Well, I appreciate you working with us till next week. Hopefully we have.
Someone has to sign a form to extend it. Oh, we don't need it?
We just need a request.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry to interrupt.
So I, I request that you provide us with an extension to next Thursday to consider the information, particularly the ECCR, so you have all the information in front of you and that you vote that night.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The other question.
Again, I apologize in advance. I have the other commitment that I can't change, which is the same thing as a public hearing.
No, no, no. Part of this falls on us. I, not us, but yes, the town.
But it shouldn't be interpreted as any lack of priority.
Last meeting, we were a little disappointed because every question we asked, there were no answers. This, tonight, you guys definitely came prepared, so.
Last month, I, I was unable to attend. I have a son that has ADHD and autism, and there was a medical complication that prevented me from attending. I am the only one authorized to speak on behalf of the owners in these meetings and, but for that, I would have been here. So that is, again, that doesn't reflect the owner's lack of priority of this. It's a family business. I told them why I would not be here. I've now told you.
So it's a bunch of different factors that backed us all down to the last minute?
Yes.
So let's try to work together and come up with a solution everybody can live with.
And Lori has my cell phone numbers. You're welcome to it. You can reach me, and I'm happy to answer questions to the extent that it falls within your sunshine regulations. Again, I apologize for inability to make the next meeting, but our representatives will be here.
Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to close call?
I have one more question.
Oh, hold on.
Lori, could you give us, what controls, you know, the subdivision applications and resub and resubdivision applications? There has to be something in, in our regulations that says this is what has to happen in order to, you know, resubdivide or subdivide, you know? Because again, I'm looking, I'm reading that note and, and, you know, it just says that, you know, you cannot deny, you know, according to bulk and lot, you know, requirements. But it doesn't say anything else about, you know, what else do you have to, what path do you have to take in order to resubdivide? Or, or what is the requirement to resubdivide? Or, or what are we looking at when we resubdivide?
So your, your subdivision regulations are what this application is falling under. The subdivision regulations do refer to the Balkan area requirements, and those Balkan area requirements basically waive, well, this item number nine waves all of them for this region. But basically, you're not really working under your zoning regulations, you're working under your subdivision regulations.
But normally, the subdivision regulations give you some idea of what is required as, as an application for subdivision, you know? And, you know, what, what you can look at, what you cannot look at, and what you could consider and what you can't consider. Because basically, what we're saying is that, you know, they can, they can resubdivide without considering anything. All they have to do is resubdivide. And, and that's not normally, you know, not the case. In terms of normally, it says that in order to subdivide, or you have to subdivide in this specific fashion, or in this specific, you know, way in order, or whatever information they really have to provide to, to subdivide something. And, and I don't see that. And in terms of, you know, I'm, I'm missing where, you know, what is controlling this resubdivision and what is required to be presented during a resubdivision? And they're saying, well, we don't have to give you anything. All we have to do is come before you and say we're resubdividing, and you have to take our word for it that we've met all the regulations of a resubdivision.
That's why I asked for the town attorney opinion of that.
The subdivision regulations are enacted based on Connecticut general statutes, chapter 126, and ours.
Well, I don't know that I have general statute 126.
Well, but.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, somewhere, you know, we're trying.
The forefathers of this town has developed these regulations under those statutes, under the general statutes.
But there has to be some paragraph in our regulations that say this is how you subdivide or resubdivide.
They talk about, so that subdivision, whole subdivision regulations talk about how to do that. But if a resubdivision, by definition in our subdivision regulations, is a change in a map of an approved or recorded subdivision or resubdivision, if such change, one, affects any street layout shown on such maps, or two, affects any area reserved thereon for public use, or three, diminishes the size of any lot shown thereof and creates an additional building lot if any of the lots have been conveyed after the approval of recording of such map. So it's under number three that we, that this is requiring to go to through resubdivision. And subdivision says that under the zone, you're supposed to meet the requirements of that zone from Balkan area. And that's where the zoning regulations come in. So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the questions beyond that. Do you have? I don't, I don't know of any other explanation for that, so. Subdivision is based on the zoning regulations of that zone. So you could subdivide lots based on the Balkan area of that zone. Okay?
Thank you.
Did you get the answer?
I get what you're asking. I understand.
You understand.
I understand what you're asking.
Is this something that?
It's not clear as to what, because it's so ambiguous. It's like, to you, it's not, but to us here, it's not a clear outline of what we have to look at, that's all.
So the subdivision regulations refer to the zoning ordinance for your Balkan area.
Right, and then you go back and forth, and that's part of our problem with the zoning regulation.
But you are acting as a planning commission when you are.
Right, so we are planning, and everything that I read in the subdivision and in the plan of conservation and in the zoning is to, to be, you know, in compliance with the town's vision. And this is, I'm paraphrasing.
No, it's to be in compliance with the town zoning regulations.
But I'm just also, and also not only being in compliance with the zoning regulations, but also have a vision with it. So that's where it's confusing, so. Because your plan of conservation is a vision.
That is correct. But usually, you refer back to the POCDU more with, when you're developing it from a zoning perspective.
All right, we're going to move on now, so.
So you know what we want from the town attorney? You know what we're requesting from the town attorney?
Yep.
Along with Commissioner Susak.
You want the ECCRs.
I think that's what he's getting. Yep.
Landlocked parcels, and, and I wrote down regulations, and I, I think you're trying to figure out whether or not you're supposed to, whether or not these are by right regulations or not. Is that kind of what I'm getting?
Rich?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's more of a case law thing.
Yes, and if you could tomorrow morning, put a priority on this, because there's not a lot of time.
Nope, you'll have them tonight.
Not from the town attorney?
You'll have the ECCRs tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
And make a motion that we extend public hearing 2963 until next Thursday, the 16th, to a special meeting.
Second.
Location to be determined.
All right, please, show hands.
What'd they say?
Next Thursday, the 16th.
The PH number, did you say 2963 or 2960?
Oh, 2960, I'm sorry. 2960, my bad. Let's get to the point.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous? Thank you.
Yahoo.
New business? Public hearing PH 2963.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, January 9, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing 2963, 90 Elm Street, special permit application to allow for a place of worship, Enfield Square Realty LLC, and Enfield CH LLC, and Enfield Nassim LLC owners, David Spangster, applicant, map 43, lot 16, business B R Zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Vinnie.
Grillo.
Here.
Francis Alimo. And Richard Susak is here.
Is there anybody here for the applicant? Come in, please.
I lost all my stuff. Oh, here it goes.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Sangster, and our location right now is 11 Alma Road in Windsor Locks. Michael Party from 88 North Main Street, Windsor Locks.
Go ahead. What do you got for us tonight?
Well, thank you very much for hearing us tonight. I don't know how to follow that, but I'm not a lawyer. I am a pastor, and we are looking to create a space for our church, New Life Church, in the Enfield Square Mall, which we just had a long conversation about. And we currently are meeting in Enfield at the, was used to be Rayvett Cinemark Theaters right now. We've been there since 2016, and we do a tear down instead, we're a mobile church right now, where we, we tear down and set up every Sunday morning in Theater 11, and we hold our worship services there. And then we, at the end of, at the end of the service, we have to tear it all down and store it again, and we do that on a regular basis for the last almost three years now. So as you might imagine, that's starting to get a little tired. So we were hoping to find a location that was close to the, the place where we're at right now, because we're getting great results here in Enfield for our church. We are, we are, before that, we were in, we were in Windsor Locks since 1955. We actually own property there, and we decided as a church that we were not meeting enough people. And our church property is on a dead-end street in the middle of a housing development. So we weren't meeting a lot of people, so we figured we would take the risk and go mobile for the time. We, when we did our research, we found that most of our new growth for our church was coming from Enfield all the way down to Windsor Locks. So we decided to look at Enfield as a possible place for our new services. In doing so, we've had great success. We've grown from our regular average attendance of about 80 when we were in Windsor Locks to about 120 now in the last three years, which has been great for us. So that is our request. We are looking to get a special use permit for the, what was the American Eagle space in that, in the mall? I think it's space, there's a number to it, I'm not sure. Yes, 40. Yep, that's the one. I've looked at so many spaces. But yeah, that's the space we're looking for, and we're hoping that we can get your approval for that.
Great, thank you. Questions, commissioners? Jenny?
I just, just curiosity, and that's all. Because I am a churchgoer.
Okay.
You have a building currently in Windsor Locks?
Yes.
And I understand you want a bigger space for your Sunday service or whatever, but you're also talking about moving other programs into this space? So are you going to, is this, I guess my question is, is this going to be your new home and no longer in Windsor Locks?
That is the ultimate goal down the road, is to find a new location for our church. We're in kind of like, we're calling this phase of our, of our journey, kind of like Mobile 2.0. And so right now, we are holding a lot of our programs in Windsor Locks, but because the, most of our new growth is coming from Enfield, it's a little bit of a hike for people. So we're thinking of moving some of our programs closer to where the new parishioners are living.
So you're basically looking to relocate?
Yes.
The whole, the whole church? I guess, you know, instead of having it part-time in Windsor Locks, part-time.
Exactly. We'd rather not have two locations.
Okay, that, that was my question.
Yep, good question.
Commissioner Alimo?
To the planner, was there a staff meeting on this at all? Any comments from?
There, the comments that were received were in the staff report. Again, this was sent out electronically, and the comments were received electronically. Looks like we received from engineering and water pollution control, and police did not have any issues.
Is that any, I don't see that.
In the staff report.
Okay. All right. So, got it. So the occupancy is going to be 180 seats?
Mike is on my board, and he's also the one who drew the.
I'm looking at the map here.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was able to fit in based on the seating that we have at our existing church.
But there was no, no review from the fire department?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I talked with the assistant fire marshal months ago, and before we got this, and he, he said it, it will allow for fire code 300 people in that space.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
He, he liked the drawings, and he approved, he gave me a tentative approval on them, barring we come to you guys.
And did the planning department reach out to the fire department to find out if the egress and the doors and everything are here wide enough? Is this on one level? Or is this, are these seats tiered?
No.
It's all part of the building code.
So.
But there's nothing here.
But that's got no, nothing to do with our purview. The building department handles that.
Right. So. So this is a temp lease, a temp lease, not a long-term lease. What was referenced earlier tonight was more long-term leases. This is a temp, we're not allowed to, to make structural changes to the space. We're basically just dropping chairs in and building a small stage. That, that's what we're doing. We're not allowed to, by their rules, on a short-term lease, to make major structural changes.
Just like to see more comments, if, whether people in the future, if they were there or not, and answers from the different departments in our notes, if you would, please, Mr. Chairman? Please, thank you.
Just one more thing. The health department had no comment at all. Nothing was received from them. I'm just concerned that, and this is a bad thing, but if you do have a, some kind of meet and greet, and there's food there, that somebody's there, and that there's safe handling of foods, that's all.
Right. We currently have a similar scenario with our organization, with our contract with the theater. So we are not allowed to make our own foods and bring them in, things like that. We can only bring in packaged, you know, donuts and things like that. We're not allowed to make anything. So that, that's, that's how they have dealt with that issue, because it is, it's a concern. So, so that's, that's how we've done it so far.
Commissioner Higley?
You might want to give a little information to the audience, because you're on TV, about what you're going to be doing, because you're growing, and there might be some people out there that might be interested, because you have youth activities and that type of stuff.
Yes.
So feel free to let us know.
All right.
If they get approved. Always, always free press. I'm all for it, but let them get approved first.
If they get approved, this is what they would like to do.
Yes, if we get approved, we would love to, and I, I put it in, also in your letter for you to see kind of what of our goals are. Our church currently, it's, it's a contemporary church worship service, has full ban for worship and things like that. So we like to move around when we, when we worship. And, but we also have children's programs for our kids, youth programs for the teenagers. But we also have children's programs for our kids, youth programs for the teenagers. We even do different programs throughout the year, where we have marriage seminars and premarital counseling seminars. This spring, in our semester of Bible studies, we're actually doing a financial peace university thing for people who want to get a hold of their finances. So, we're trying to really, our goal as a church is, our stated vision for a church is to see people who are far from God discover new life in Jesus Christ. And we feel like that's how, the way we do that is by serving people. So, everybody has needs. We have an epidemic, opioid epidemic in our area. So, one of the programs we have is a Celebrate Recovery program that we're working on to help people who are in addiction or any hang-ups or hardships, that they can come and do that as well. So, our goal is to serve the community. One of the comments was made that the Enfield Square Mall, when it was first put in, brought new life, and that just happens to be our name, New Life. And we feel like we're going to bring some value to the community, and we already are, and we want to continue to do that. That's our goal, that's our heart.
Great.
Thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public and let them have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody wishing to come up and speak? Public Hearing 2963. Anyone? No one?
There's somebody.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. I need your name.
Jonathan Grande, 33 Spruesson Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Just want to echo Pastor Sankster's.
Jonathan Grande, 33 Spruesson Road, Enfield, Connecticut. Sorry for my loud voice. I'll make sure you guys are all awake still after all that stuff. Just want to echo Pastor Sankster's remarks. It's a wholesome church. It's really here to do good in the community. We've been attending there for about two and a half years since they came to the ball, and seen a lot of lives change in a positive fashion. So, respectfully request that you all pass this without any concerns. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? Come on up, Lori.
Hi, Lori Youngeyer, 271 Abbey Road. A lot's happening with all these churches that are coming to Enfield, and it's all positive, and our young people need it, the adults need it, so I'm encouraged to hear about this. I don't know this pastor personally, but the last guy that spoke, the Grande family, I've known for over 30 years. And when I heard that they attended this church, I thought, it's got to be a good church, because I've known them a long time. They're good people, they're generous, they're kind-hearted, they love our town. So, that's all.
Anybody else wishing to come up and speak? Going once? Marie? Going twice? Okay. You're welcome to come back up. Staff, any comments or concerns? Guys, what do you think?
Let's go.
You ready to close the public hearing? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I think you just close it. You just close it.
Okay, I close the public hearing.
You can't. You have to get a motion.
No, he can close it.
Oh, he can close it, I'm sorry.
Closing the public hearing 2963. This is not all my fault, for everybody watching, okay? I take some of the blame. Say a prayer for me, please.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of Public Hearing 2963 Resolution dated January 9th, as prepared by the planning department, with the 17 conditions indicated with zero site-specific conditions.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Comments? Discussion?
Straightforward.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? Congratulations, and welcome to Enfield.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Designation of CR CROG liaisons. Who's interested?
Linda and Mary.
Are you still in?
Oh, yeah.
Vinnie? You want to be a CROG liaison?
You want to be a CROG liaison? It's only four times a year.
Every, yeah.
It's only four times a year.
What do you do there?
You meet with other towns.
Do they have snacks there?
No.
No?
No, there are no snacks. I'm sorry. No food. Maybe a water, I think, sometimes.
Anybody else interested? Mary, are you still interested?
Yes, that's fine.
Jenny? No interest? Linda?
I could go without, but you're more than welcome, Jenny.
I'm clear.
For both?
Yep.
So, then somebody's got a, no, I'm, what is it? Like, I don't.
Take a motion.
CROG.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint.
Excuse me.
Mary Scott as the primary liaison, and Virginia Higley as the assistant liaison to the CROG organization.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Congratulations to the both of you.
Congratulations.
Review of bylaws. You're welcome.
Got your bylaws? So. What is here? Article, um, eight.
Article eight.
It says first and third, it should be second and fourth.
Yeah, we need second and fourth now.
Yep.
And the order of the meeting, the agenda, is different here than what we get.
Yes.
And it talks about one meeting is just for plans, and the next meeting isn't, somewhere in here.
Right, and then they also.
Yeah, see, they have, they have two separate agendas.
So, it needs to be second Thursday.
So.
So. And this is the fourth.
Two separate agendas?
No, I'm just saying that when this was first done years ago, they had one meeting, the first meeting was for, where the heck is it?
Public hearings, old business, and then the second one.
Yeah, and then the second one was just other stuff.
Right.
Do we want to do that again? Or do we want to leave it like we're doing it now? In which case, we only need one agenda, and the agenda has to conform with what we get all the time.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I think that it's important, the town attorney report, in person, quarterly, first meeting of the month. We don't think we've had them.
No.
In person.
The CEO is supposed to come the first meeting of every month.
So.
Although at one time, when I did it, it was the first, you know, the first meeting of each quarter.
Yeah.
But they say the first of each month.
My concern with setting specific dates is, if we have an overloaded agenda, the CEO can wait.
Yes.
Or come a meeting before or a meeting after, and by setting a specific date, you know, it just tends, that's my only concern, Jenny.
No, I was going to say, he could be moved down if, by a vote, he could be moved down. But if you don't get him on a regular basis, then you're not getting what he's working on and what issues are caused.
And how is it written right now?
That he comes the first meeting of the month.
Yeah, and the town attorney is first meeting.
But.
Quarterly first meeting of the month. But we could do it.
Yeah, Charlie Dern used to do it the first meeting of the quarter, you know, so you didn't come all the time.
Right, but is the CEO following the schedule right now? Because he seems to be pretty random when he comes in.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, but I think, at least in my eyes, I think we're getting updated regularly. I mean, we're not falling behind by any means. He shows up quite a bit, and, you know, the staff keeps us up to date. So, I just.
No, I don't want to cut you off whenever you're done.
Go right ahead, Jen.
Oh, I'm just saying that we do follow, maybe we don't add them as five, six, or seven, but the first meeting of the month, we do make sure that those reports are on there. And if Rick can't make it, he has other town elected seats where he lives that sometimes it conflicts, and so, he hasn't always been able to make it that day, but he will, he'll always send a report. So, I always make sure that there's, if he doesn't have anything, I report that there's nothing, or if there is something, I make sure that he has written something up for you guys in a report form. So, I don't know if you want to maybe amend that to in-person or in writing, or change the dates.
Along with what you're saying, Jenny, I think if we were just to say something along the lines that if we could get a face-to-face meeting with the CEO once a month, and leave it open, you know, so, like Jen said, if he's occupied or whatever, you know, it's not mandatory this day.
I think we're.
Town attorney, I think we should be a little more.
Yeah, yeah, I think Rick does a great job, but, you know, he's going to go off somewhere. So, I like your idea of fitting him in, you know, in his, in his place.
So, that's that.
So, it sounds like you want to eliminate one of the.
He doesn't have to be here the first meeting every month.
In-person, one meeting of the month.
Yep.
Okay.
One meeting a month, I'm sorry. In-person, one meeting a month.
The other changes that I just noted were that those, we never updated when we changed the schedule from second, from first to third to second and fourth.
We already talked about that.
Oh, you did? Oh, sorry.
We just did a little bit ago. At the beginning.
There's going to be a quiz.
Then Article 10 says first Thursday, it needs to be second, and then Section 1B, third Thursday to the fourth.
And bond releases are just on the second Thursday?
No, bond, yeah, bond release on the fourth Thursday.
Fourth.
The last, the last meeting. Yes.
Well, we've got bond releases on the second and the fourth.
Oh, there they are.
On both.
That's why you need one agenda for both of them. It gets confusing, you know, trying to figure out which ones on which, and we never followed it.
Understand what she's saying?
I don't know why it's here.
So, you want just one straight agenda and take out one, either be Section 1A or Section 1B? And just choose one agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And follow it? Okay. I would assume it would be Section 1A, because that has the specifications for reports.
Yeah.
And it should mirror the agenda that we're using, or you should move it around to this one. You know, I don't care which, but, you know, when people look at our bylaws, they should agree with what we're doing.
Chair, I have one thing. On the order of business in the agenda, I don't see executive session anywhere.
Call that out for a meeting.
You do it? Okay.
We should have one at our next regular meeting.
So, the executive session's voted on during the meeting?
Well, no, it's put on the agenda, and then we vote to go out.
Vote to go into.
Right, but I don't see it on the agenda.
But we don't.
It's not on the agenda.
Right, so you just say there's no executive, so if you come to that item, you just say there's no executive session tonight?
We just don't even leave it on, because we're so far and few between.
Okay. And the chair determines when is the executive session?
Yep.
The chair and staff.
Chair and staff, chair and vice chair.
Okay. As long as there's something in place for that. Okay, thank you.
And are we having an executive session next meeting?
Yeah, so, the council just heard that case on Monday, so we weren't sure whether we should wait to the next meeting or not, that's why.
Would be the next regular meeting, right? Not the special meeting?
We could have it at the next meeting, because they have, they did make a decision. So, I didn't have anything to report until they made a decision.
I think the next meeting is going to be pretty contentious. Oh, wait, we're doing a special.
We're doing a special meeting, that's why I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Regular, okay, thanks, sorry, Lori.
Change the agenda or nothing. Whatever that agenda is, has to stay.
Okay. Special meeting is just that.
So, I know staff is busy, but maybe you could just kind of reformat it when you get a chance, and just show it to us so that this thing, so we could vote on them?
Yep.
Okay.
Have them in our next packet or something, regular meeting.
As amended.
Yep, as amended.
Unless you see something that we miss.
We'll go through it again.
Actually, do a one thing. Go ahead, Charlie. Something in here I saw about, tell us what to do. Executive session is called once, so call by a vote of two-thirds to the members present.
That's all we're going to talk about.
So, one of the things in here, it talks about under our hearings, under, on page six, Section 3, it says a competent stenographer, recording secretary in person.
Yes.
Shall take evidence, and the evidence shall be electronically recorded. We need to, if we're going to have somebody be remote, we need to make sure that this complies.
It doesn't work remote.
No.
So, if we don't want remote.
No.
Then we need to.
She needs to be here.
Recording it, and Jen's doing it too.
Recording it, but when you say, can you read back the minutes? Who's here to read them back? Can you read back what was just said? You know, did we vote, didn't we vote? Was there a show of hands, wasn't there? There's nobody there to say what happened.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's what makes it difficult. I understand if she's sick or something.
But we need to figure out, too, what do we, do we want that or not? We want them in person? Then we need to say that's what we want, and we need to.
And she's very good at it.
She is great.
Very clear.
So, we hope she can do this. We need someone.
So, we make that clear to Lori and Jen.
That wasn't, this isn't a permanent thing, you guys were going to start.
No, I, I mean, I agree that the recording secretary, if they are not here, should be finding an alternative.
Thank you, okay. Right, so you're in agreement with us.
So, we really should have one next week.
Oh, we should have one today.
Because you guys are busy enough, and you should not have that task dropped on you.
We can't even figure out what we said and didn't say.
It should be her to find someone.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else on the bylaws?
Lori, Jen, you got everything you need there? Okay. Moving on to correspondence. I'd like to welcome the new commissioners. Councilman Higley.
I have one thing. Yep, doesn't matter what you call me. I have, that makes up for me telling you the wrong thing. It's not correspondence, but I read in the paper that one of the new laws that took effect January 1st was concerning blight. The town now has the ability to go to court and claim ownership of properties that are not being kept up and not in the foreseeable future going to be working with the town. So, that might be something that the town might be looking at, but I wanted to bring it up to let everybody know about it.
Like an enforcement action?
Mm-hmm.
There's got to be some sort of timeline with that.
Well, no, it's up to the town. I will find it and bring it to the next meeting.
We have a copy of it, the blight guys all have a copy, and we'll be discussing it.
Okay, I just thought it was a very good tool in your belt for blight.
Absolutely, something's got to go, yeah. Commissioner Scott? Scott, anything to say? Correspondence?
No, I have no correspondence.
What, Commissioner Ladd?
I have a question.
No.
Of food trucks. Can they go to the senior center?[1777.91]
There is a list, that I don't have up right now, of permitted places through the Town Manager's Office for all properties owned by the town, where food trucks are allowed to go without a permit. I'm not sure if the senior center's on there. But we can double check.
She'll find out.
I guess Lori will check into it.
Good.
I was asked that this way.
Commissioner DeGrae, anything? Commissioner Suzak?
Could, could we get another copy of the, you know, our Planning, Zoning Commission with the names and the addresses and the telephone numbers and email? So, so that, in case, you know, there's, if something comes up, you need to give somebody a call, it would be really good.
Yeah, we, we're waiting for the final decision from Town Council as to who is gonna be on, so we now know, so.
Commissioner Lima?
That's another thing for that.
All set?
No.
All right.
Less Commissioners.
No, Directors, Planning.
For what?
Directors, Report.
Couple of things I'd like to discuss with you guys is, I was talking with Commissioner Suzak, and I've noticed over time, they try to adjust our approvals, you know, and change it to where it's, okay, we vote to deny, and that's not what is written. Everything written should be for an approval, and it should be read as an approval.
Absolutely.
Then we don't have to clarify that you're voting to deny this. If you vote yes, then it just gets so confusing. So if Rich reads what's in front of him, he doesn't get confused trying to read it, we don't get confused voting on it. Rich is in full agreement on this, correct Rich? And that's how I want to go forward with this. I think it's gonna take a lot of confusion out of things.
Motion should always be in the affirmative.
Right, but you've seen where we've changed it to-
We had someone at that desk a while back that thought it should go the other way, too. That's how that started. We didn't necessarily agree with it, it just-
Well, I think what it does too is, when you do that, it means that you are always saying, putting in approve.
Yeah.
Which means that you're not giving your own opinion, you're telling, you're basically giving the, the staff report, and that's what you're telling us, saying how it complies or doesn't comply with regulations. And then at the end is the approval.
Yep, and she always gives them to us, and you-
So as long as that approval is that, it means that it's not, there's no influence in that regard, which is important, because that is not, that decision there, it becomes from us, so.
No, 'cause even on the Council, we would have two, an approval and a denial, so at least, he could read something, 'cause it's so hard, you guys know, yeah. Another thing I'd like to look at in the future, and it used to be the way of the town, is administrative approval. I've dealt with this town for 30 years, and I've sat out there, and I've dealt with the boards and commissions, the building departments and everything else. Enfield is very, very unfriendly. And I think the commission, or the Council has made some big changes over the last several years, with staff, with the commissions and everything, to try to make Enfield more of a builder-friendly, business-friendly community. And I just see the way that we do administrative approvals is so obsolete. I understand there was an issue in the past, somebody might have been pushed to do something they shouldn't have done, but I for one believe in our staff. And if we can't believe in our staff, then we have the wrong staff. And administrative approval should be that. They should be able to approve something that meets the regulations, without having to wait two weeks to come to us. Now, I'm not asking us to do anything tonight about it, but this is something that has bothered me, and I would like to put it on the agenda, discuss it, and make a decision. I mean, it's not just me, I can't change it. Go ahead Jenny.
Other boards, I'm on another board, the planner calls the Chair and says, "I'm going to administratively approve this, and this is what it is." And then the Chair either says, "Well, I want you to come, bring it to the Board, I think we need to at least look at it."
I'm even fine with that Jenny.
Yeah, but that takes care of the two weeks. You know, instead of having to administratively approve a store that's replacing a store, but it's a different kind of store, then she can just call you, you can say, "Go ahead and do it," and then, you know, just tell us, or somebody tell us.
Tell us after the-
Yeah.
I mean, here's a perfect example of the one that we're gonna do tonight. They're moving from one side of a parking-
Yes, I agree.
-to another. It's like, there's just a-
This is ridiculous.
Parking lot between the buildings. It's-
It's time and money for an applicant. And us sitting up here, it doesn't affect us. But I've sat there.
Oh, no. Inland Wetland does that.
Your husband's in business Jenny, you get it. It's, and, and I think staff would be on board with this. Lori, I know you don't want it, but, you know. So, either we can, I mean, if we all agree, maybe, I don't know if we have to put it on the agenda?
No.
Have a discussion about it and vote, or-
It is in the regulations in one section that administrative approvals have to go before you, so it would be just that one text amendment to remove that, or change it.
How come Inland Wetland doesn't do it like that?
Their regulations are just different.
Okay. Well, I think in that, in that case, we need to do that. I mean, I know you guys are busy, but we need to do it as soon as possible.
We're working on just some quick fixes for zoning regulations, so, you know, we were talking about the Thompsonville-
Did you want me to talk about?
Yeah.
Now, would that have to go to the legal?
Okay. So you guys have approved a few zoning amendments recently. As you know, we approved the Thompsonville regulations, and you haven't seen them integrated into the regulations yet. And that is because we've been talking to the Town Attorney's Office about it. The motion that was made when we, or when you guys approved the Thompsonville regulations did not include taking out the existing Thompsonville Village Center regulations, which means now we have to go back to the public hearing process to remove the old, and replace it with the new. So, that said, from there, the Commission has approved at least the senior community living regulations and the outdoor audio systems change. Those things were sort of lumped in to the, what we have is like a redlined version of the regulations right now, and so what I was looking to do is, give you the regulations updated with the audio systems and the senior community life, and then we can go forward with Thompsonville changes, and if you want to look at administrative approval changes. And we're also, we have to put forward that accessory building height change as well to, it has to go to CROG first, and then it has to come back here for public hearing.
Is there any way in the interim that staff could call Ken and tell him and just put it on the agenda so the people don't have to come and they could just, you know, get it started? No, no, administrative approval. You know, before the public hearing, while we're waiting, in the interim, would it be, could we just have staff call Ken? No, yes?
You can't, 'cause it's still-
No, but it would still be, I know, but it would still be application to be received, and you could just tell us, but the people wouldn't have to come?
They still don't have to come, 'cause it's administrative approval. But, and that's the whole, that's what makes it so, but this is, so, you know, my concern, I believe in, we act, it happens. Now, we changed the regulation from 12 to 15 feet on the garage roofs, on the accessory structure, and that's not in the regulation yet, and it's not legal yet, correct?
Correct.
Why?
We have to move it forward, we also have been talking to the building department, and also, just legal about it, and the building department has had some comments on that requirement as well.
It should have been at the meeting. Correct?
We didn't exactly reach out to the building department prior, because it was a zoning regulation, it's not pretty standard for us to circulate zoning to building, it was just sort of in conversation that he brought up more comments regarding his input on approving something like that, where we might be approving something that then he can't approve, so.
He can approve.
No.
I mean, he doesn't dictate what can be built in town.
They use state code, so he couldn't change it if he wanted to.
No, but they're saying they're-
Some possible conflict, so we were just trying to-
Right. Can we put this on the front burner? I know everything is important, but you know, this would be quickly done.
The administrative approval? I'm hoping it's done next meeting.
No, they're gonna put it on CROG, they're gonna show it to us, they're gonna show it to the Town Attorney. That's why I asked in the interim if you could just be called.
So, we'll try to get, we were just saying, we've only got the one application pending, I think. So, I mean, we could actually really work on some regulations and some stuff for your next regular meeting.
My, my biggest priority, and I think you're getting it, is administrative approval, Lori.
Yep.
That cuts two weeks off of that, not to mention the amount of paperwork it creates for you, for something that shouldn't be there. It should be, I agree with Jenny on the phone call to the Chair, to whoever, I don't care, but you check in with one of us, done. Congratulations, welcome to Enfield. Be the smiling face that we're supposed to be. You know, Jen's a little grumpy.
There's something else, there's something else that I've been looking at, and that's our site restoration bonds. So we require that an applicant, they come in with a vacant site, they come in and they're gonna build buildings and everything, we require a site restoration bond where John Kabibbo, or whoever's the Assistant Town Engineer, has to calculate how much it's going to cost to read, to, to finish the site, should they not finish it. We also have an ENS bond, Erosion and Sedimentation Control Bond, we also have landscaping bond. So, in the, all the time that he has worked here, he has done these for every applicant, and it requires sometimes, sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars of bonding, and not once have we called it. Not once.
I've built tons of houses in subdivisions, I've had to do landscaping-
Yeah, engineering. They, they used to call it engineering. And the thing is, if they go belly up, like that guy that came in and he wanted to do the road, but he didn't have the road finished, and you brought up, like, what happens if he doesn't finish it? That would be the engineering bond.
A letter of credit.
Well, yes, yes.
So, so basically-
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, this is, this is if you don't finish your, your whole site, everything, grading, landscaping, whatnot. This, this requires applicants to post bonds literally in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have never, ever called it, because as Jen, do it again, right? As Jen was just saying, is, it, there is, in the building code, and before we issue a CO, we make sure that all of these things are finished. So it's a duplicative effort, that's very onerous on the applicants.
Okay, but, okay, sitting on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. The building department, and we've had some very shady builders in this town, the building department can say, "No, we're not gonna accept this road, it's not good, I don't like it." If the developer doesn't have a bond up on that road, and he walks away from the road, the town ends up assuming it anyways, and that's happened again and again. And that's why we did what we did, because there were developers who would go in, build the houses, sell them off, and then just have the binder course down on a shoddy drainage system. Roll their hands up, file bankruptcy on the LLC, and they're gone.
I, I completely understand what you're saying, but I'm talking, this is a site restoration bond for a parcel, it has nothing to do with roads. This is, when Stanley comes in and builds a hundred thousand square foot warehouse, and associated improvements to the site, we're bonding for the entire site for all of those improvements, has nothing to do with roads.
Well, if we have a landscaping and erosion-
Right, we already have-
As far as them not paving their own parking lot-
And we, that, that's not, it has to be paved before we'll give a CO-
Right.
Because it's not-
Right.
Right.
But if they don't pave it, they run out of money, it's their own property. But if it was up for sale, see, that's where we're building in the winter time-
But they're not gonna get a CO if it's not right.
We can't put your driveway in, 'cause the ground's frozen, we have to wait till spring. We would post the bond to cover the cost of that driveway, because the property's transferred ownership. And you need to protect the buyer of commercial or-
But, but this is for the entire site. I, I've never seen it before in any town they've worked in, that's why I'm kind of like, wondering why, it seems to be a bit overkill.
Could you get a few examples of towns that don't do it?
Okay, yep.
I need more information about what you're talking about specifically.
I'm just, I was just trying to get a feel, but I will certainly do more research and better explanation and some-
Are you talking residential property too?
No.
No, just commercial.
Yeah, so, so it's, what he's looking at is calculating for, when you look at the site plans, you'll see the limits of disturbance, and what he bonds for is how much it'll take to put the topsoil down again, and like-
Yeah. Regrade it.
Regrade it, put grass down, that kind of thing. And those, and, yeah.
How does that fall out of landscaping, like Charlie just said?
Landscaping is the trees, the bushes.
Right.
Grass.
Nope.
No, we don't bond for that.
No?
No, well, we bond through, for that through this, but I'm just saying that, in all the years that they have been doing this, and I asked him, he said, "Not once has it ever been called."
How many years have we been doing it?
Over 20.
Okay. Can we try to find out-
Find out, for sure.
Why we started doing it?
Yep.
I'm, I'm definitely open, I am, open to listening, because it's time to-
Yeah.
Put Enfield on the map.
Yeah.
Get people in town.
But I would like-
And that's a biggie, bonds and stuff like that, drag down development-
This is a huge bond.
I agree, I agree.
I would like to see it stay on subdivisions for the roads and stuff, 'cause I was, I was here when they did-
I wanna see, there's more to it.
Mayfield and Misty Meadows.
You can't spend it on your project.
And both of them had to be threatened with court action.
There's more to this than, and I just want to know what it is. Okay.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll just add that to the list of things that we need to have a conversation about.
Okay.
And-
Can I move for the, for the staff to do the administrative approval for SPR?
Done.
We're not done, I'm sorry.
Not done, relax.
Let's see.
Under correspondence, and this may be a biggie, but I'd like to have a discussion about putting planning and zoning and wetlands back together. We were in charge of both. It will streamline the application process for everybody who comes in front of us. They're getting asked questions again and again and again, that are the same questions by two different boards, wasting a lot more time. I'd like to have a discussion with staff and you guys about that. I don't know how you feel about it. If none of you are interested, nix it right now. But I'm, go ahead Rich.
You know, I, I, again, I, I would, would feel very comfortable, I, I served on inland wetlands, and I totally understand it, and-
Jenny?
And, and basically, you know, you're, you're looking at it anyways, you know, when I look at it, at a plan-
So who are you?
I, I look at it, make sure that it makes sense in terms of what the drainage patterns are, where the water's going, and that, you know, it, it sort of has some cohesiveness to it, and then I start looking at what the building requirements are, so, but I, I mean, you have to look at that in order to do that, and I, and I would agree that, you know, it, it will save a lot of time, and maybe what would happen is we can go back to our first and third meetings.
Yes. Inland Wetlands doesn't meet very often anymore, because most of the land is developed.
But like we, there was a subdivision that we dealt with not that long ago-
I think that's great.
That a lot of your concerns, planning and zoning's concerns, was the wetlands and the escarpments, 'cause we're in charge of escarpments, but we're not in charge of wetlands, and it just seems like, and they've been grilled at wetlands, over the stuff we're grilling them again. I mean, do you agree Lori?
There are pros, such as what you, you've just stated, and I totally agree with that. The cons, to me, right now, would be figuring out the statutory timeframes, because-
That's on you. That's not our problem. Handle it.
It's, it's, they really have, like, really messed with the wetland statutory timeframe, so we'd have to like, try to figure out, it's like, okay, you're reading, you're reading on the same night, you're hearing this, you've approved it from wetlands, so then you could still-
That's, even if it turns out-
You've gotta remember when you could take action. So, it's not that we can't do it, it's, we need to look at it.
But at least the applicant knows, he can take those plans now, hand them to his engineer, and say, "Go. I'm approved. It may -- I got 60 days for somebody to challenge it, but I can move forward."
And the town split wetlands from conservation, so it would be quicker if it was one board, I would think. I understand what you're saying, right? The timeframe.
That's usually done for grants.
I'm trying, everybody --
Splitting them, conservation and wetlands is usually done because of grants.
Sorry.
Splitting the conservation from wetlands is usually due to grants. Same with creating an agricultural commission. If you don't have one, you can't get an agricultural grant.
No, I'm not --
So I thought you were implying to put them together.
No, I'm saying that before it was inland wetlands and conservation.
Oh, right, okay.
And that would have been too much for planning. I'm saying that now you have wetlands that doesn't meet as often as it used to, it might be something worth looking at.
Conservation should be separate from --
Oh, no.
The only town I know that does that still, I think, is Farmington. But we could --
Does what?
Has the combined commission.
Conservation.
Planning, zoning, and wetlands.
I think Manchester does.
Manchester?
Yeah.
So my concern with regards to inland wetlands and planning and zoning was is that's a lot of hats. And we have a hard time, I think, sometimes keeping with the hat we have on, because sometimes we're over trying to go, "Well," and we're -- planning is one thing we need to be doing, zoning is another thing we need to be doing. Some of them are the same.
Aquifer protection.
Aquifer protection. Then we have inland wetlands. So, you know, what we ask for in one is a little different sometimes than what we ask for in another. And when we start straining from one piece to another piece, we get a lot of confusion. And so that would be my only concern. That's a lot to put on. They do, but they don't.
They're all different sets of regulations. That's the key thing.
There's a set of regulations for each.
And literally a separate hat each time you make a decision.
That's exactly right.
And you have to maintain that.
And that's -- talk takes discipline. And I don't know.
The other towns do it.
Oh, we got discipline.
We should look at how the other towns do it.
I understand where you're thinking, though. I mean, and it makes sense, you know, you're reviewing everything else anyway, and you and --
But like when we discuss escarpments, you know, Rich, over a brook that was getting increased water flow and stuff like that, is that in our preview or isn't it? Because it's draining to an escarpment, but is it wetlands or any?
And that's where you run into --
No, but if we're the same board, we're not running into anything.
No, when you're hearing something for wetlands, you have -- that's a separate piece than when you're hearing it as --
But Rich would have had his questions answered at wetlands.
But does that transfer over to planning and zoning? Because you've got different hats to put on.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, but we're just in the talking stage, and in their spare time, they're going to get us to how the other towns are working.
In your spare time with every other thing.
So the next agenda you send us will be wetland, planning, and zoning. Aquifer protection.
Yes.
And used cars.
That's right.
And used cars.
And used cars.
Food trucks.
So it's something that if we have the interest, if we can get a consensus, I would really like that to be discussed, maybe even run it by the town council, because I think that's a big decision for this town, and I think they should be part of that. But I would like to get that going, too. I promise that I would try to help fix issues that have dragged this town down for 30 years. And if anybody else has any other ideas, I mean --
We don't have to do it all tonight.
So we're going to have --
Jesus!
It sounds like we pretty much have a workshop at our next meeting, our next real meeting, unless it's something --
The next real one.
We don't have any other applications, right?
Breaking out the rules so we don't get as clowns like tonight.
So far, there's three.
Okay. Well, I mean, so anyway, whether or not we have just a workshop meeting or workshop and other business, I'm looking at administrative approval, discussions on administrative approvals, removal of the old Thompsonville regulations, site restoration bonds, and possibility of combining PCC and inland wetlands. Was there anything else that you wanted to bring up? I mean, this doesn't have to be an end-all or be-all. There's a lot to do in these regulations, and I'm working on that RFP for the consultants to come in for the zoning regulations and the POCD, so I'm hoping to have that by end of January.
I understand, and the economy's picking up, and things are starting to look a little better. Let's try to attract people to Enfield. I believe in you guys. I believe you can do it. And if we can give you the tools to help you do it, that's what it's about. And if you see something like you're speaking on, please do, Lori, because you're part of us, you know, and you represent us in that office. So do you, Jen. So does Raquel.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we got to work together and make this happen. If you need a special meeting, call me, call whoever you call, call us all. I'll be here. You know, anything we can do to attract new business to this community.
Along those lines, we're also -- Lori, this is more, I guess, of your project overall, but we're getting -- we're working on updating our software for permitting to make it more cohesive among departments, because we have right now planning and building on one software, but it's not -- like Fire Department and Health Department don't also integrate into it. So I think that -- I know Commissioner Alamo, you were concerned about getting comments, and that is something that we are working on making a smoother process.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. If we get all the comments, it'll be helpful.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we met with all five fire marshals the other day, sorry, so we could actually work with each other to help each other move in a more fastidious fashion. So, and some of them showed up today because we had a review of a potential software program, and they came so they could see what the potential for their workload would be, and they were very -- they liked it. So we're moving forward. It's slow-going, but little by little, we're getting a little bit better and faster at things. So we're trying to streamline as best we can, but changing the regulations is going to be a big task, but that will streamline a lot more. But, you know, Jen's right. I mean, it was a good meeting, I think, that we had with them. So I think they were happy for us to invite them.
If we can get all the outside departments' comments and concerns, it would help us make our decisions quicker and help the applicant quicker.
Unfortunately, we can't make them comment.
No.
So if the time comes and goes, it --
Well, you know, at least something back from them that -- an email that you've heard from them, and they're okay with it. That way, they're, you know, we can feel comfortable about passing or giving somebody a permit.
To clarify on the staff reports, when it says "none received" on there, it's not because we didn't send it to them, it's because we did reach out to them and send emails, and we didn't receive a response. So, and they're not in our same building, so it would be easier -- it's easier for us to say, "Hey, building, can you get back to us?" Or, "Hey, engineering, can you get back to us?" And water pollution control is usually in the building at least once a day. The fire marshals are in five different places throughout the day. So, and health is in a different building. So we do try to keep on top of those, but it can be difficult. We are trying to work on it, make it easier.
So it's hard to understand if it's -- you see "none received," that they were there and had nothing to say, or you reached out to them and they didn't answer you. So we have to have that for the record, you know, like for tonight's application for the place of worship.
Well, "none received" is "none received."
But you reached out.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we make sure we circulate everything.
Maybe you can have a talk with a few of the party --
I'm retired, happily retired.
You guys look at each other's article.
Thank you for that.
And my last correspondence is, next meeting, can you mix up the party? No more Republican, no more Democrat. We're planning and zoning. We're supposed to be nonpolitical. I'm so tired of politics, all the way up the line. I want to work as a team, all of us.
Do you want me to sit next to you again?
Actually, I would prefer if Rich sat next to me. You can sit on the other side, but I rely on him quite a bit, and you are very good, too. So I don't care how it's done. I just --
You didn't want to sit next to me, is what he said.
I don't care how it's done. I just don't want us to party.
So my question is, do you want staff to put the nameplates in the appropriate places, or do you want to say the three, well, or four?
Right.
Chairman, vice chair, secretary, and --
You can leave this group the same.
And then have everybody else figure it out? Or do you want us to -- you know, you could grab your nameplate as you enter, or do you --
No, because then it's not the same when you're -- we got to be uniform like we have been. But, you know, if you put --
Alternates on the end still.
Yep.
We still put our alternates on the end. They just swap.
But John doesn't have to sit there, and Vinnie doesn't have to sit there. Put Vinnie on your side, John on his side. You know, one of you go sit down there, and Franco sits down there. Done. You know, just, I want to start portraying that. Everybody wants to do this, let's do it. Let's be the first, you know, let's take the step.
Yay.
You know?
Chair.
Absolutely.
Vice chair.
I want people to come in and see us as a nonpolitical board.
Second vice chair.
You know? I am done, finally.
Okay.
Sure?
No, we do an administrative --
Okay, I move that we allow for administrative approval of SPR 1800 on 90 Pearl Street.
Second.
Anything you'd like to share about this?
It is as straightforward as is written on the agenda. It's a retail grocery store. Right now, their roof is leaking.
That's all you had to say. Straightforward.
They want to move.
To approve administrative approval? All in favor?
unanimous.
Unanimous. Applications to be received?
There is actually, sorry, one more admin approval. You received a narrative at your desk.
Oh, yeah.
This came in late last week.
High-tech conversions.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so basically at 8 Niblick Road, they have alcohol as part of their industrial operation that's being partially stored inside and outside. It's a fire hazard. They need to solve it. So what they're proposing is a couple or three different concrete pads and a canopy so that they can store the alcohol outside in a fire-rated chemical storage container. We did also send that out for comment to all of the departments, fire included. Everyone said they had no problem with it. There's also, I think, a generator and an air makeup unit, and just the canopy and the driveway being paved, we figured we would ask for admin approval for those mechanical items on a concrete pad.
I move that we allow administrative approval for SPR 1801 High-Tech Conversions.
Second.
All in favor? Show of hands. Applications to be received?
We really don't have anything in the office. Everything we get, we move forward.
That's beautiful.
So we do have one thing that's sort of coming down the line, a road adoption. We're waiting on a couple more documents from the applicant, and we need to get Department of Public Works to sign off on it first before we can continue the process.
What road?
Yep. It's the river -- it's a Pappa subdivision, River Cliff. It's off of, what is it, Bridge Lane and --
Oh, road adoption.
The road adoption.
The town takes the roads over. I thought you meant like adopt a spot between the road. Pretty flowers. I was like, who's doing that?
Apparently, the PCC chair has to do the planting.
Nope. So. It's coming down. I'm not sure if it's going to be on the next agenda or what's going to happen next. We're waiting on a few more things.
Careful engineering on them, approved?
That's what I'm saying. They have to -- we have to get all of the documentation, then they have to approve it.
Yep. I know, like the storm drains all have to be clean before the town will accept them. Yeah, so, good. That subdivision's pretty old.
It is.
We've been working on it for the last eight, nine months, trying to get them to --
Is the final course paved?
At this point, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Is it all? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Opportunities and unresolved issues? I'm having fun. Let's go, guys. Let's push it to midnight.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Can they do that without my approval?
Yes, they could.
Son of a gun. All in favor?
So Ken, you should say no.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations and --